We're going to call the March 22nd special call meeting to order of the Baldwin County Planning Commission and I'll ask at this time if you'll stand with and we have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Lord, we thank you for the day and for the blessings you've given us. We thank you for the opportunity we have tonight to conduct this business. We pray that you will guide us in this time and Father that we'll conduct ourselves in such a way we show respect to each other and to you. And Father, I just pray that you'll bless our county. We're thankful for this great place that we live, for our leaders and for our first responders, especially Father, for our staff who've worked hard to make this meeting possible tonight, put the work together for it to happen. Now, Father, we just pray that you'll be with us throughout this evening. We pray all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call a roll at this time. Daniel Nance, Brandon Bies, Robert Davis, Blumberg Tonsmire, Jason Paget, Michael Mullik, Greg Seibert, Bill Booger, and Jamie Stradiger, our newest member. Welcome. Okay, we only have one item on the agenda tonight, so let me set some ground rules for the meeting so that we all understand what will take place. I will open the public hearing in a moment, and when I do, our staff will make a staff report for us to establish the item before us. Then the Planning Commission will have opportunity to ask questions of our staff. And then I will call on those that have signed up to speak. We have quite a few, so I'm going to ask that you respect our time and let's try to keep each one speaking at the most three minutes. So I'm going to ask one other thing tonight because of the nature of this item, because I have read the letters and I've already seen comments in the letters that I will not allow tonight. No personal attacks, no comments to neighbors. You're here to address only the item before us, which is, Matthew will lay it out, there are some situations that have matched up with the previous approval, and we're going to address that. That's all that we're here to address. If you've got issues with neighbors, you take that up in a separate venue. It's not here tonight. And I will stop you from speaking if you do that and ask that you sit down. And so we'd like to keep the meeting in such a way that we can discuss really what's on the item, on the agenda, and at the end of everybody, I'll give everybody an opportunity to speak that has signed up. If you haven't signed up, you need to do that right at the end of the table there. They'll bring them up to me. But at such point, I will close the public hearing. And when I do so, the meeting as far as public speaking is closed. Don't raise your hand and ask me to speak. We won't do that. If we call on you to speak, then that would be possible maybe, but that's how it's going to go. All right, with that, we are then going to open the public hearing tonight for case number P-15001, which is the Niemeyer property. And I will ask of our Planning Commission, is there's anyone in the group that needs to declare any prior communication on this item? Okay, Matthew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners. I do want to remind everybody that this is being broadcast via Facebook Live, so when you do talk into your microphone or have something to say, make sure you click on that microphone and speak right into it. And we'll also work to make sure everybody else has access to that who needs to speak. Today, we have a more complicated case, which is why we've done, we asked you all to consider doing this as a separate meeting so we could kind of really hone in on this particular issue and not be distracted by the whole litany of cases that often come before you. I'm going to start with some introductory material. I'm going to go slow, which means this presentation is going to take a little bit, but I think it's important for everybody to understand how we got to where we are today and kind of the background in this process. All right, so I'm going to actually start by talking about the purpose of zoning because we can't understand why we're discussing this today without understanding that. So what I have up on the screen here is kind of what we just call the zoning district rainbow, and you've seen this before on zoning maps. And what you'll notice to the left, you have rural designations in green, and then you get to single-family, multifamily, resort, RV, business, major commercial, and industrial. And the whole purpose of zoning is to encourage a transition of uses from less intense uses to more intense uses. In an unzoned area, we don't regulate use, and therefore you can have a very intense use right next to a use that's much less intense, like a single-family home. So that's the whole purpose of zoning. This particular property is in a zoned area. We're going to refer to it as Little Point Clear because that's what it's operated as. It's located in Planning District 26, which is one of the first zoned areas of the county in that Point Clear area. The zoning designation for this particular piece of property is B2 zoning, and the use, as we describe it, is a country club use. You might think of it in a more modern term as an event venue. However, event venues are not currently contemplated in the zoning ordinance by that name, and so therefore it is treated as a country club use. This is just an image for reference. It's taken off Google Street View of Little Point Clear, just to make sure we're all kind of have that same reference point as we discuss this property, and then also an aerial image for reference as well. One thing to note here is that this property happens to be located in the Point Clear/Battles Wharf Historic District. That's not something that you as a Planning Commission often have to interact with, but it's in one of our circles of responsibility in the Planning and Zoning Department. There are four historic districts throughout the county, and the Architectural Review Board has to approve any exterior features on structures that fall into one of these historic districts. So throughout this presentation, you'll hear about applications to the Architectural Review Board that were approved, and that's because this happens to be located in this historic district, which again is the Point Clear/Battles Wharf Historic District. Going back to this proposed zoning or the purpose of zoning and this district rainbow of less intense to more intense uses and noting the B2 designation on the screen, again, the property where this particular use is situated is Zoned B2. Now, if you go to the zoning ordinance, pages 5-4, 5-5, we talk about the B2 uses. Now, this is hard to see on the screen, and I don't really intend for everybody to read through the whole thing, but first we list all these permitted uses, and that has things on there like a bakery, retail, bait shop, laundry self-service. It has this whole list of uses that are permitted within B2. What you will not see in that list of permitted uses is a country club. However, if you look further down, you'll see, and I have this highlighted again, difficult to read on the screen itself, something called conditional uses. Now, for the Planning Commission, we recently changed the name of these to Commission Site Plan Approvals, which you see at your meetings. Previously, they were called conditional uses, and so that's what you'll hear during this presentation today. So under conditional uses, you have this notation of country club as an allowable conditional use in B2 zoning. So what does it mean when we say something is a conditional use? I have here on the screen something that's called the rural urban transect, and it kind of illustrates how zoning is supposed to encourage this natural transition from rural to more urban and commercial intense uses. And I'm going to use this to help explain the purpose of a conditional use. If we zoom in on one of these areas here, and we'll look at kind of this residential area where I've popped up the words allowed uses, so in that residential area, we would expect normal residential type uses, and in the next sector would be uses that would be disallowed in that residential area. Well, what happens for uses that are on the border, right on the line? Well, those are what we call conditional uses. These are uses that kind of fit in that gray area between the transition zones. So because conditional uses are in that gray area between uses, there's special consideration and special approvals required as part of that conditional use process. Here's just an excerpt from the Citizens' Guide to Planning that talks about conditional uses in general around the country. It says, "Conditional uses require the applicant to get someone's approval before the use will be allowed. Generally, conditional uses include those that might or might not have adverse impacts on their neighbors depending on what is developed nearby and the proposed layout of the development." Here's the excerpt from our zoning ordinance about conditional uses. So it says, "The Planning Commission may," so it's the Planning Commission who approves conditional uses, "under prescribed standards and procedures contained herein authorize the construction or initiation of any use that is expressly permitted as a conditional use in a particular zoning district. However," and this is the second highlight on the screen, "the county reserves full authority to deny any request for a conditional use, to impose conditions on the use, or to revoke approval at any time upon finding that the permitted use will or has become unsuitable and incompatible in its location as a result of any nuisance or activity generated by the use. In practice, due to their sensitive nature, conditional uses are what we call site plan specific, meaning that they must be built and used as approved by the Planning Commission, and if there are any desired changes, that necessitates that the applicant come back to the Planning Commission and approve those revisions." Who are the referees in this process? And you know, as staff, sometimes people think we're on someone's side, and the best illustration we've come up with is that we are neutral referees in this process. And it means that sometimes we have the coach from both teams yelling in our ear about a decision or call that we are making. So staff are the referees through this process. The Architectural Review Board is a referee in some of this process because this is a historic district. The Board of Adjustments is a referee in this process, and the Board of Adjustments gets involved if an applicant wants to break the rules. There's a way they can break the rules, and that's by going to the Board of Adjustments, at least some of the rules. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that's the body that we're here with tonight because they have the ultimate approval authority for these conditional uses. All right, so I'm going to start now on this specific site with a timeline of events because a lot has happened with this specific site and this specific use. So the property was acquired by Patricia Niemeyer on June 1st, 2015. And for sake of creating a reference point here, I actually want to peer back in time to see what did this property look like prior to June 2015. So we went to Google Maps, Street View specifically, and found an image from April 2011 that provides some guidance, just kind of a reference point of, here's what this property was in 2011. Again, this is available in the public domain. And based on our understanding from applications in the past, that it was being utilized during that time period as residential apartments and some level of event or office space as part of that. So moving forward now with the timeline of how we got to where we are today. On June 30th, 2015, renovations were approved by the Architectural Review Board. You can see the case number under each of these, but I will not read those. On August 6th, 2015, a conditional use application was approved by the Planning Commission. So this is now approaching seven years ago. This is the application for that conditional use back in 2015, and you'll notice that the applicant was requesting approval for continued use as short-term apartments with one office and meeting space, and they note on here as previous owner, Gail Goodwin, for past 20 years. The next thing on the screen you'll hear, see here is our notice of action. After the Planning Commission takes an action at a meeting, a notice of action gets published declaring what that action was. So the action from that particular meeting was, again, the request, "conditional use to allow continued mixed residential and commercial use, two short-term apartments and meeting hall." And that was approved, and I don't have anything to really highlight on the approvals because it was a pretty generic approval at that time, and there would be site plans that were approved in association with this. Here's an image from that time period and with those applications. All right, after this, there was a land use certificate issued by staff. This is what allows them to actually start construction and get those building permits. And then we fast forward now almost a year to August 9th, 2016, when there was a new application submitted to the Architectural Review Board for a new sign and a roof replacement. Well, just after that, on September 26th, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Department received a complaint about decks that were being constructed across a setback line. One thing the zoning ordinance does, the zoning ordinance is the rulebook in the zoning process that we as the referees are governing the process with, and that rulebook sets setbacks, and it says you can't build your primary structure any closer to the property line than this setback, and an accessory structure like a deck is limited to five feet from the property line in most districts. So we got a complaint that there were decks being constructed very close to the property line. Here's an image of that notice of violation allowing or notifying Ms. Niemeyer that the construction and addition of decks attached to the existing structure without a land use certificate was not appropriate. And here are some images that were taken at the time of that complaint of those decks being constructed without the required permits and what appears from these pictures to be too close to the property line, and we'll discuss that more here in a moment. So there's a period of silence here, and most of the current planning and zoning staff, and I should have introduced myself as Matthew Brown, the Planning Director, and we have here Buford King, Deputy Planning Director, Oregon Code Enforcement Officer, and we do have Linda Lee, who's our really senior referee here, who was here at this time, and then we have DJ Hart over here as well. Both DJ, Ms. Hart, and Ms. Lee were here at this time, but based on looking back at these events, it appears that they may have attempted to do some type of application and realize, oh, wait, these decks will not be approved, so we therefore need a variance. On March 7th, there was an updated notice of violation sent that I have here on the screen, and that notice of violation essentially repeated the same thing, but it said, by the way, you're going to need a variance or you're going to be in violation to this. So the next thing that happens in this event is that on April 10th, 2017, there was a variance for decks approved by the Board of Adjustments. That means Ms. Niemeyer submitted an application to the Board of Adjustments. That's a different citizen board who essentially reviews requests to break the rules. That's the simple way I like to put it, and then that board reviews it and sees it, determines whether or not that request is justified. Here is the notice of action from that Board of Adjustments meeting that took place on April 10th, 2017. And notice here in highlight that there were three different approvals. And notice here in highlight that there were three different approvals related to the decks. It said, "The rear decks can extend 10 feet beyond the building. The front and north-side decks can extend five feet, and the south-side deck is not approved." And then it noted that this entire approval was subject to them going back to the Planning Commission and getting their conditional use updated. Remember, conditional uses are site plan specific, so if you change something on that, it needs to come back for the Planning Commission for approval. Well, then, as expected, that is the next thing we see taking place in this timeline of events. On August 3rd, 2017, there was amended conditional use approved by the Planning Commission. And we're going to take a look at all the conditions that were part of that approval. So, again, the request that's noted in this notice of action was a conditional use to allow continued mixed residential and commercial use, two short-term apartments, rental suite, meeting and reception hall, and retention of constructed decks as approved by the Board of Adjustments. Some additional items that were noted, decks, approved them only to the extent approved by the Board of Adjustments. Conversion of office space to suite. During this process, it was discovered that the office space had essentially been turned into another short-term apartment, but the Planning Commission approved that as part of this approval. And then the use of the property, scope and activity. The Planning Commission finds that the activities are consistent with the approved meeting space and may be continued. We're going to discuss that more later, but this is where that decision was made back in 2017. And then parking. "The required 11 onsite parking spaces shall be shown on a survey submitted with the land use application, and then an agreement for off-site parking shall be maintained." And then final, just an additional note on here, that's usually on every notice of action for a conditional use. "Any additions to the building or changes in use shall necessitate additional review and approval by the Planning Commission." This is just a quick overview of the site. We're going to be seeing this a bunch more in this presentation, but this is a sketch that was prepared by the applicant as part of that 2017 variance process and conditional use amendment process. So, they subsequently applied for a land use certificate regarding those changes and received that. Now, from this point, we enter a period of several years of, I'm going to say relative silence, because I haven't, we don't have any documented new complaints during this period. That's not to say we didn't ever have anybody say anything about anything going on during that time. I just don't have anything showing up in my files. So, we're going to move forward now, and notice that there was an additional approval with the Architectural Review Board in May 2019. And then on June 24th, a subsequent land use certificate. These were for minor changes, a roof and a fireplace out there. However, then in late 2021, we began receiving a number of complaints for this site. So, numerous complaint communications about use, parking, safety were received from September 7th to February 20th. Some of these complaints were just a simple text, in the sense that they were just, they said, "This is being done, we don't like this." And then many of them were photos. And so, the next several screens, I'm going to show those photos that we received through this process. And you'll notice that a lot of them specifically related to site distance and safety with vehicles and patrons of Little Point Clear parking in the right-of-way. So, you can see these pictures from September 7th, October 11th, October 11th, again, October 11th, October 15th and 16th, again, October 16th, November 15th and 20th, December 1st and 4th, throughout this time period. So, what did staff start doing as we received these formal complaints coming into our office? So, on September 24th, 2021, we had a meeting at Little Point Clear with the owners and representatives regarding the potential hotel use. And you might say, "Well, why do you emphasize a hotel use?" Well, as these complaints started coming in, I pulled up their website, and I said, "Let me understand a little bit about what's going on here." And it was interesting, they were advertising as a boutique southern hotel. And we said, "Well, I know one thing for sure, a hotel is not allowed in B2. So, if this is indeed a hotel, then it's not permitted in B2 zoning." So, we met with them onsite, and they said, "Listen, our use hasn't changed, that's pure advertising, we'll take that, we'll take the word hotel off our website." And we continued to review their parking issues and those safety issues. But the big issue that we had is that it was not clear where the right-of-way line was on this property. And so, because of that, it was very difficult to actually evaluate whether or not they had the parking that was required and that they had shown in their prior approvals when getting that approval from y'all as the Planning Commission. So, we coordinated with the Highway Department on December 9th. The right-of-way was staked by the Baldwin County Highway Department. I'm just going to verbalize this here, let me back up. A couple days later, the Highway Department issued a separate notice of encroachment to the owner for encroachments into the right-of-way. That's not before the Planning Commission here, it will be mentioned briefly later. We actually had some additional phone meetings with the applicant, talking about what their plans were for the parking. But on February 17th, I say the applicant, by that I mean the original applicant to this site, the one who holds the conditional use. But on February 17th, we had a meeting at Little Point Clear, that was myself, and that was Code Enforcement Officer Ori King, with the owner representative regarding the parking issues specifically. And then on March 2nd, 2022, we issued the notice of violation to Ms. Patricia Niemeyer. So, now, we're going to look at that notice of violation and the apparent violations that we discovered during our review of this site. There were seven. First, the reconstruction of disallowed decks. Second, the failure to maintain required off-street parking spaces meeting the design standards in the ordinance. Third, the failure to permanently reserve required off-street parking spaces. Fourth, failure to provide safe access to required parking. Fifth, failure to provide to the Planning Director proof of agreement for off-site parking. Sixth, failure to obtain proper permits for canopies, awnings, and fences. These are newly constructed canopies, awnings, and fences. And then seven, potential increase in intensity of event venue use. We'll now step through these one at a time. Reconstruction of disallowed decks. "A deck is defined in the zoning ordinance as a flat uncovered area generally adjoining a house, building, or pool, which may be used as an outdoor sitting or recreation area." As we move through this, I just want to hearken back to the timeline on April 10th. Remember, they got that variance that said, "You can have some deck, but it can only go 10 feet from the south and nothing," I'm sorry, 10 feet from the rear of the building, and nothing on the south side of the building. And then that got confirmed by the Planning Commission in that August 3rd conditional use. Remember that the rear decks were supposed to be, again, just 10 feet. So, we're going to look now at the rear decks. So, the rear decks that were approved, I've circled them in red or boxed them in red up on the screen, and it's hard to see if you're looking at the small screen, a little easier on the big screen up there. But there's a dimension on there that shows where that 10 feet is, and that's essentially what's shown on here. Again, this is according to the sketch provided by the applicant at that time. Well, during our onsite review, we noted that there had been a separate platform constructed, and it had been surfaced with artificial turf, forming a new deck extension behind, in the area where a deck had been specifically disallowed. And here's an image that was taken on February 25th of this year, showing that artificial turf and that elevated platform forming a deck as defined by our zoning ordinance for We then, again, going back to that Board of Adjustment action, noted that the south-side deck was not approved, specifically disallowed. So, the deck to be removed for the Board of Adjustments is shown here in brown on the screen, in a little hatched area. You'll know, again, hard to read on the screen, but the depth, as measured on this sketch, showed 10 feet four inches. As of 2019, the applicant had removed that deck as required. And you can see, this is from their application to the Architectural Review Board in 2019. There's just an old concrete, I think the original concrete patio at that location. But again, now we fast-forward to our site visit on February 25th, 2022, and they've actually reconstructed that deck to a size that was larger than it was when it was disallowed by the Board of Adjustments and this body back on August 3rd, 2017. So, that's the first item, the disallowed decks. Now, we're going to talk about the parking spaces not meeting the specific design requirements. Section 5.1.1 says, the zoning ordinance, says, "Off-street automobile storage or parking spaces shall be provided with vehicular access to the street or alley and shall be equal to at least the minimum requirements for the specific land use as herein provided." And section 15.3.1 notes that those spaces should be nine feet by 19 feet. Again, on August 3rd, 2017, the amended conditional use, that notice of action said that there were required 11 onsite parking spaces. So, we're going to hone in on that with this specific item. And that the dimensions shall meet the requirements of the Baldwin County zoning ordinance. Now, we note right off the bat that the sketch that was part of that application showed dimensions that did not meet the requirements of the Baldwin County zoning ordinance. So, we wanted to verify this onsite ourselves. I want to point out here that space number 11 was kind of the initial problem parking site. You recall from some of the pictures that we saw that there were a lot of vehicles attempting to park at that location, and clearly parking what appeared to be well within the right-of-way, something we'll show here shortly. Part of the reason for this appears to be that from between 2006, which is the imagery at the top, and 2020, which is the imagery at the bottom, there was a lot of landscape added to this site. And that landscaping was at the front of the building, between the building and the parking, which just further pushed the space that was available for parking back toward the road. So, just a couple points here. The Highway Department marked the right-of-way on December 9th, 2021. Without that, it was impossible to make a determination here. The Highway Department, there was a notice of non-permitted encroachments letter issued by the Highway Department on December 16th, 2021. There was a meeting with Rob Littleton, a Little Point Clear representative and planning and zoning staff regarding plans to ensure parking within the right-of-way. That, I believe, took place on December 20th. On February 17th, 2022, again, we met onsite and inspected those spaces. During that December 20th meeting, we were, Mr. Littleton explained plans to try and fix that parking space number 11. And during that, during that visit, we determined that space 11 did now appear to meet the dimensional requirements of the ordinance. However, in measuring the other spaces, we determined that spaces eight and nine failed to meet the dimensional requirements of the ordinance. We will note that during that visit, the owner indicated that they would modify the fencing, landscaping, whatever they needed to do to fix those two spaces. So, just graphically, spaces eight and nine, in terms of where that marked right-of-way was, and where that landscaping was, could not, you could not fit a 9 by 19 parking space in that spot. All right, so, number three now, failure to permanently reserve required parking spaces. This may be one of the more important items in the violations, because it goes to the core of why we're here, this conditional use, this use that's on the borderline in the gray area, which is why it came to you for approval. So, again, 15.3.1 requires that off-street parking must be permanently reserved for the temporarily storage of an automobile. Once you have parking and it's your approved required parking, you can't convert that space to another use. This image here was actually taken on December 11th, a couple days after the right-of-way parking, or the right-of-way was marked. And I have to confess, I was actually driving down this road on a Saturday, heading south, and just was going to be passing this site, and I thought, "Oh, I'm just curious to see what it looks like as I pass by." And I actually missed the site. And I missed the site because there was a large tent in the parking area, which kind of changes the way the whole site looks from the roadway. So, I pulled in and I snapped this photo, and you can see how this tent is literally occupying the public right-of-way, not to mention the required parking spaces that are on this site. As we look back through just different online sources, the Little Point Clear Facebook page had numerous posts showing this area on the front of the property being converted to event space use, which effectively increases the square footage for events on that site. And this goes all the way up to, the latest one we happened to pull was December 12th, 2021. So, the failure to permanently reserve required parking spaces, it's clear this space is being used to expand the event space on this particular site and is not being permanently reserved for parking. Number four, failure to provide safe access to required parking. So, again, 15.3.1 says that the parking must be connected with a street or alley by a driveway which affords unobstructed ingress and egress to each space. And it notes that that driveway access should be at least 24 foot wide, 24 feet wide. Here's, again, an image representing where this difficulty comes in. You note that there's landscaping that's been installed by the applicant through a license agreement with the county along the roadway here, and that license agreement has had the effect to make it very difficult to access some of these required parking spaces for their intended use. And though this is a bit anecdotal, I'm going to share what we experienced when we visited the site on February 17th, 2022. When we pulled up to the site, the first entrance was roped off, so you couldn't pull in there. So, you had to pull around, and you had to pull into this gravel space, and it just wasn't even clear where someone who was visiting the site should park their vehicle. So, initially, we parked right here and then had to move it as we were trying to take those measurements. But in our initial parking place, where it's kind of the intuitive place to park, we were actually parked within the county right-of-way. And again, somewhat anecdotal, it just so happens that Google Street View imagery is from January 2022 right now, and you can actually see the county survey flags on this site. And the image that was captured as they drove by shows two vehicles, again, parking in the intuitive location on this site, based on the way it's set up right now, which results in those vehicles being parked in the county right-of-way. So, there is no safe access for the public who's coming to the site that's intuitive for just that random person who's coming to the site to make a delivery, or even potentially a patron to the guest suites. Number five, failure to provide proof of off-site parking. This one's a quick one. In their approval in August 2017, the Planning Commission said that an agreement for off-site parking should be maintained and provided to the Planning Director. We do not have that, has not been provided to us and is not in our files. Number six, a failure to obtain permits for canopies and awnings and fences. Since that last approval in 2017, there have been numerous awnings, fences, and canopies constructed on the site without the required approvals from the Planning Commission. Again, this shows a picture from 2019, and then again, some of the fences that have been added currently here in 2022. Number seven, increased intensity of an event venue use. Notice here I have a question mark with an underline. So, what was approved in August 2017, it says, "The Planning Commission finds that the activities are consistent with the approved meeting space and may be continued." Now, that's pretty broad. So, what exactly were they approving? So, we looked back through the minutes of that meeting and said, "What was represented to the Planning Commission that would have formed the basis of this approval?" Looking back at those minutes, and these are small up on the screen, but on page 32, you had a representative of Little Point Clear stating that the events are 75 to 50 to 100 people, some events had 125 people. Again, Little Point Clear representative, 125 guests. This is another picture of an event in which 125 guests attended. And then this is a statement from Vince Jackson, the Planning Director, saying, "Obviously, if you're hosting an event with 150 people..." And so, we have those three excerpts from the meeting minutes that at least provide some reference for what the Planning Commission was understanding the current use of that property in terms of the size of those events. So, this brings us to our staff recommendation. Obviously, this is a complicated case. So, this is our final slide. Thank you for bearing with that presentation. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission require the following of the applicant of the previously approved conditional use, P-15001, to be completed by May 7th, 2022. These are, remove illegal portion of rear deck and illegal south deck, provide a survey from a licensed Alabama professional surveyor documenting that the 11 required parking spaces are outside the county right-of-way and meet the dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance. ordinance. Install parking bumpers or similar features to clearly mark each of the required parking spaces. Provide a parking plan signed and sealed by an Alabama professional engineer certifying that all 11 required parking spaces can be safely accessed for vehicular parking. Provide a signed letter to the planning director declaring that the 11 required parking spaces will be permanently reserved for vehicle parking and will not be utilized as event space, and that events will be limited to 125 attendees. Six, provide the planning director with proof of agreement for off-site parking. Seven, remove unapproved canopies, awnings and fences. And that failure to comply with, to the satisfaction of the planning director, the requirements above by the date noted, shall result in the automatic revocation of conditional use P-15001 as amended. And that's our staff recommendation.
Thank you, Matthew. Okay. There's a lot to chew on, so any questions from planning commission members of our staff?
Matthew, on recommendation, I'm going to call it 5B, events limited to 125 attendees, does that include staff, or is that just people who are visiting the site for events?
We, we had thought of attendees, literally the patrons in that particular case.
And I did, and you answered this question here on this last slide, whether there was any sort of delineation of existing parking, which clearly there's not if we're asking for curb stops and that, so that's my question right now.
Any other questions for staff?
I have a question. Current parking lot is gravel, it looked like in the pictures, so there's no even delineation at this point of where these 11 spots even are.
Matthew, looking at parking, it appears when there's an event there that they have event parking in the lot next door, in no particular kind of order, but, but they're still parking there. Does that property belong to them, or is that property they lease? Who owns that off, or event parking area?
The applicant is here and would be better positioned to answer that question. I know at, at least at one point in time, they had a lease on it, but I'm not, I can't, I'm not certain of the current status.
One other question, given the, the tent in the front, et cetera, has there any, has there been any discussion with the fire marshal and the EMT people in case there was an incident there? Whether it be something that the fire department would need to come to, or EMT people would need to show up for an injury or a health emergency? Has there been any discussion with them about how they would handle something that went on there?
That's a great question. There has not been a discussion by planning and zoning staff specifically.
Were any of the existing parking spaces noted as ADA accessible?
So on at least one of their original applications, space number 10, they marked as being ADA accessible. Now, interestingly enough, our zoning ordinance does not address ADA accessibility. That's governed by federal law, and so I'm going to leave it at that.
Any other questions?
I got one more, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking at the image that was taken by staff on February 25th of the rear deck, the one that appears to be covered in some sort of artificial turf. Is that, is that rear deck separate from the deck that's currently attached to the structure? Or is it essentially one? Yeah, I'm trying to figure out what the, is there a step between them? Is there a separation between the two?
You'll have to ask the applicant, and code enforcement officer, Ori King, was actually the one who did this site visit, but I believe it's a, it's a, it's a level transition. There's no step down or step up. It's one continuous level area, though I don't know that they're necessarily affixed to each other.
Okay.
And, and the applicant can confirm that as well.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Matthew. Okay, I think I'd like to hear from the applicant. Ms. Niemeyer, is, is it Littleton on the, my page? Is that right?
There is.
Okay. Would you, and I will start calling on you to come up, so I'm going to have Ms. Littleton come on up at this time, and...
At any point that I'm not okay with all this, I'm going to get this one on the ground, I'm just going to break resistance to do this.
Okay.
But I'd like to give you another more than on this support comment with you guys.
Not what I do well.
Okay. All right then. And I will ask, as each of you come to the mic, and you will have to come to the mic to speak, and please give us your name and address when you do that. So Mr. Davis is going to speak?
So are you going now or me?
No, I'm just preparing to go.
Okay.
So you want to go ahead?
I guess.
Okay. You want to reply to staff's comments? I think we'd like to hear.
Oh, my heavens. That was so much, I'm not even sure, it's been a long time since I've finished.
I would say start somewhere, because there's a lot of stuff that I think we would all like to have answers to as far as...
Okay, so I'll do the best I can relate the order. The south deck scenario, the artificial turf, blah, blah, blah. Initially, the whole reason that it was constructed, and I'm not sure what you're aware of, or when you were commissioned, or volunteered, or how, but, so I submitted land use and conditional use in the county with Ms. Linda Lee, who was so helpful, and then finding out that they were not going to be the juristic-ing whatever, whatever authority for a building permit, we went to the city of Fairhope. Moving forward, we're just remodeling, we're doing, we're whatever. When I submitted the conditional usage, and I'm going to babble and back and forth, so stop me if I'm going way too fast. So I did apply in 2015, 2016, the initial conditional use, conditional usage for two short-term apartments, one office space and a meeting space. I think that was like August 6th. Very quickly, the same month subsequently, I applied for the land usage with Ms. Linda Lee's help for what I viewed to be what I was going to do with the land. And you have to understand, I've never done this before, so I'm naive and didn't really understand. However, I made it clear in that land usage that it was going to be three short-term apartments and a reception space, because it didn't take me 20 minutes. When I bought the property, I quickly learned, because I had tenants, the guy in the office, it was gross, he was filthy, and I'm thinking, this is not going to be copacetic. I need one and done, 24 hours, so I switched it to a suite. With all the ensuing troubles that we had, obviously, the conditional usage was approved. I was not lying. I did what I said I was going to do, I just didn't know completely. I did not report any decks on the outside. I was not requested to point, report any decks. I didn't know what I was going to do. Moving forward, now we're remodeling, my now husband is doing one heck of a job, we're dealing with everything you do with construction, bringing it up to code with stringent building codes. I would dare to say that the city of Fairhope building codes are far more stringent than anything the county would enforce. I could have built Spring Hill Memorial Hospital for what we had to do, with fire mains, sprinkler systems, blah, blah, blah. But none of it included a deck until we get to the end, the contractor and the architect who submitted the life safety plan conferred, concurred with Eric Cortinas, the building inspector, what the setback on decks is. Well, at the time, and in the city, there is no setback for an uncovered structure. It can go all the way to the line. So that's why the decks came to be where they were. It was not that we just were going to move forward and do whatever the heck we wanted to, we just built them to the line. It's a non-conforming piece of property, guys. You have to understand, we do all this on point 23 of an acre. So, and my goal was to be nothing but safe. I have a grandmother that lived to 103. She was going to be with me everywhere I went, whether it was a wedding, a comedia ball, a birthday, it was going to be safe. So there is not one inch of grade change. We simply went over the existing, and there are pictures to document all this, we went over the existing cracked-up, crumbled concrete paths to provide just safety. I'm a landscape nut job. I would have done anything but decks. I would have done pavers and all kinds of cool things. It was all about safety. Yes, moving forward in a violation, I won't even go with how that all began, but we know we are all here because of an adjacent neighbor complainer. Period.
No, ma'am, let me stop there. We're here because there were very, I caught, from what I saw, very distinct statements made in the approvals about what you could and couldn't do. It's not about a neighbor, it's about, and it's not even about how wonderful your use is. I'm just looking at pictures, I think it's really great. The issue seems to be that it's too big for the site. And now, how we work that out is what we're here to do, but because a tent in the parking lot is a violation, decks were clearly stated in by this group and most everybody here, I don't know how many there are here, that were on the planning commission when that was done. So we have the luxury of, we weren't even there, so we're just looking strictly at the paper.
I understand, sir.
So what we're here to ask you, or have you share with us tonight, here are the violations, so how are we going to move forward? It's not a matter of what, how great your business is, or what your neighbor has said or did not say, it's about the violations that you have onsite, how are you going to address those? And he's given a recommendation that we don't necessarily have to follow, I want to be clear, Matthew's made a recommendation to us, it'll be up to us whether we follow that, but his recommendation has seven points, and I think we would like to hear if you're going to address those seven points, or are we flapping in the wind right now because we may just at the end of the night decide to revoke this? Because it does not meet the approval that was actually given to you. So I think what we want to hear, address the items that are in violation, not how they came about, but where are we going from here?
So I will close with a comment, and then I will refer to my attorney. In closing, sir, I have been told numerous times from staff, from code enforcement, that the only reason we are here is a complainer. So for you to say that it's all my violations, I beg to differ. Yes, I'm not clean, there's no question about it. I'm just a business owner, a naive business owner who doesn't understand how you get here based on this.
Okay.
I'm done. You go.
Mr. Chairman, can I have one second?
Sure.
Just for the record and to note on your comments, I was actually part of the Board of Adjustments meeting, and actually made the motion that was passed regarding the modification to the variances that took place. Just want to make that note.
Good. All right, I'm Richard Davis, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
On behalf of the applicant. I was in Choctaw County a couple of weeks ago, circuit court, and man, there were people talking everywhere, and I didn't know any of them, and I stood, and the judge says, go ahead, Mr. Davis. And I said, I don't know where to start. And that's a little bit the way I feel now, so, so just bear with me. I had been paying attention to this for three weeks, and I appreciate it, and Matthew and I know each other, so I'm not being disrespectful when I, when I say Matthew. But I've been involved in this for three weeks, so I am to some extent still learning. I will say that the letter that we received, and it was shown to me dated March 2nd, my first instinct was not what most lawyers do, which was, we somehow got to get a delay. My first instinct was, what can we do in three weeks? And I wish we could have gotten more time, because we may, actually made some progress within those three weeks. And when I see Matthew's recommendation for May 7, then I think that the staff thinks that we can make more progress. And I would respectfully request that when it's time for this commission to take a vote, that while I disagree with the recommendation that, that there be an automatic revocation on May 7, would at least ask this commission to say, well, let's come, let's come back and see what it looks like on May 7. I think that's a fair point. I also want to make this point, and I just took a large gulp, because in my four kids, I've now been through a handful of weddings, and as I learned about this venue, Tricia explained to me that she has three events scheduled. And, I mean, I said three, I didn't mean that, 80, 80 events scheduled. And I was thinking, all right, if we're shut down, we're substantially limited, is she going to be looking at my staff to notify these moms and dads that, that these weddings are canceled? And, you know, we're just not going to do that. That's not what we've signed up for. A couple of other things before I get into the specifics. A lot of these points are technicalities, and I appreciate, and lawyers are supposed to appreciate, that technicalities matter. But there is no emergency here. I mean, if we've heard that, for example, that median out front, or that these parking spaces need bumpers, not having them for a few more days is, is not an emergency. And I didn't hear a lot of discussion in Matthew's presentation about public safety. Now, he mentioned it a few times, but there, there just isn't a lot going on. And whether it's a deck, or whether it's grass, is just not the kind of compelling business that I hope, that I wish the planning commission would take up. So I think where I should go next, as we get into the substance of this, I was really looking forward to Matthew's, when taking the planning commission through this history. And I think the history went back to maybe 2015. And I've been relying the whole time on a letter from my friend Vince Jackson dated And I'm thinking, why in the world are we going back seven years when Tricia has a letter that's three and a half years old? And I'm wondering if we're going to be able to pull that up. And Jamie, who's been with me all of seven days, seven business days, is nodding. There's no pressure, Jamie, but hurry. This is really important. If, if the staff wasn't aware of it, if the staff was aware of it, you should have been told. If you don't have it in front of you, if you don't have it in front of you, then you're not getting the whole picture. So I see you looking at the screens, that means that you have your own monitors and you don't have to look up. All right, so I don't have that benefit, but... Vince Jackson, July 18, 2018.
Mr. Davis, if you could stay in front of the microphone, it'll just help anybody who might be viewing on Facebook, or those of us who watch it after the fact to recall what you're saying.
All right, well, I'm not going to be able to read any of that, but July 18 of 2018, he writes Trish Niemeyer-Littleton, and he says, "Everything is okay." He says that the requirements of the zoning ordinance, case number P-15001, and the Board of Adjustments, case number V-17001, everything's okay. You have done what we asked you to do. And not only is everything okay, but if you sell this property, your future owners will get this benefit. So I really don't understand the historical connection, and I see some puzzled looks.
Can you scroll the letter up? We can only read the top a little bit, can you scroll the letter?
Okay, I'm sorry.
I might interject something here if I can. You know, in my notes, and he went through the timeline and just referenced to the decks, you know... the timeline and just referenced to the decks, you know, that we had, there are setbacks for some specific reasons. I mean, if a line is here, you can't go up to the line with, and their setbacks are very, very clear. And going back a little bit on the timeline, we got the, I guess, the applicant got the approval from the Board of Adjustments, constructed to come back later, and then those decks were removed. And I don't know where this letter fits in the timeline. Maybe this is after they're removed.
Well, I think...
So, that's two, that's two, I mean, we can say we didn't know, but that was two. And now, they're built back even bigger than they were the first time. So, that could be where they might have had a follow-up visit, and this, hey, everything looks good with what this might have been prior to the landscape installation with the parking. So, I don't know exactly where this letter fits in the timeline with the landscaping or the deck removal once, and now it's been reconstructed. So, I would assume this was prior to the reconstruction of the decks further into the setbacks.
Well, and I think I can respond to some of that. And I'd ask you to recall my disclaimer at the beginning.
Sure.
That I've been thinking about this for three weeks. But attached to Vince's letter is both the survey, an as-built survey, and a design plan. And...
I'm sharing that.
Yeah, we're going to pull this up, and then, I'm sorry this is so cumbersome. I wasn't sure how to do this. So, but Vince is looking at an as-built survey. And when you look at that as-built survey, you see the labels that say turf. So, he is basically looking at how it is built to date. Now, that said, I want to please be careful with this. And sir, when you get a chance to look at the as-built survey, I think you're going to see a lot of the things that are the subject of the complaints, as Matthew read them tonight. But as I get through this, there's some really technical issues here. And if the planning commission says, "Richard, I don't care how technical you think they are. This has to be done this way. And if that north deck is four inches too far to the north, then you got to move it." And if that's how this turns out, and we get a surveyor up there, as opposed to, by the way, a 16-foot tape, if a surveyor comes in and says, "You're four inches too far north," then we'll move it. And as for the southern deck, if we remove those, that wooden deck, and if you tell us to, "Richard, we're not going to give you any grace period on that southern deck," it'll be gone by Thursday. Rob?
Yes.
It'll be gone by Thursday. Now, what you'll have there are, is broken scallop pieces of concrete. It won't be a safe, but if that's what you tell us to do, that's what we're going to do.
I think you're confused, that it's not what I'm telling you to do. It's what was explicit and expressly disallowed from the start. So, it's not what I say. I think it's what are in the rules and what they approved and expressly disallows.
Just a moment. Let's finish here first.
All right. I need to check if I can about those. Just bear with me, sir. Please.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? Because I don't know the answer as it relates. I see the artificial turf, but there's a deck built under it. So, is there a difference in, I'm not an engineer for the county or anything else, but does that count as a deck when you put artificial turf on it, or is it?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right. So, sir, I don't want to come across...
I think they, they, they did a very good job outlining the letters and what was approved and gave us the dates. And so, I mean, I'm sure he can pull, he can pull whatever. But of that, I mean, I wrote it down, but he can pull the slides, I'm sure.
Well, and I would ask him to, because attached to that letter is a survey that refers to the turf. And also attached is a land design. So, I don't know why we go back any further. And sir, if they've installed anything after that, that should have been submitted for approval, and I think the awnings may fall in that category. I can't see my client. But if the awnings fell in that category, and we can't get it approved, we'll take it down. It is not our intention to be a violator. It is not our intention to run amok.
So, Mr. Davis, are you saying that this, that we're looking at on the screen now, is the plaque that was attached to Mr. Jackson's letter, that he said he has approved, and you're basing that that approval was saying that deck was okay because there's a statement that there says "artificial turf"? Doesn't say anything about a deck.
Well...
Artificial turf could be put on the ground.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know.
That's because in that same letter you just had before, if you go back to that letter, the next line after that says, "If there are any expansions of decks," I think if I remember reading it right, says, "Be advised that any expansion of the structure, including decks, any changes to the parking, will require additional review." I don't get what you're seeing from that one picture, that there's a deck there that Mr. Jackson says, "Okay." I see something that says "artificial turf." That doesn't mean there was a deck there.
And I...
According to what Vince might have been looking at. Vince, if I were Vince, and I looked at that, I said, "Well, that's artificial turf." Doesn't say anything about a deck being there.
Right. And I thought, and look, I wish Vince was here. I think all of us would benefit for 15 minutes. But I thought, that I recall that the county's regs treated artificial turf as a deck. And Matt, you know if I'm right?
I'm not aware of a notation that artificial turf would automatically indicate a deck. I'm not aware of that.
All right. So, I want to emphasize, and I know I'm killing this point, but Mr. Chairman, if we've done something that we shouldn't have, and I wish we had more time to work through it, we will, you know, if there are decks that we shouldn't have built, we'll undo it.
I think it's a lot more than decks. I mean, from what I'm seeing, but it's not just decks. I mean, this parking issue is an issue.
Well, that...
Putting tents up to increase your use of the facility is a big issue.
Well, and that's where I'm heading.
Okay.
Okay. And your body language is telling me that you know that's where I'm heading. And the words in the conditional use permit state that 11 parking spaces must, or 11 parking spaces must be permanent. I think those are the magic words. When you look at Matt's, excuse me, when you go to the zoning ordinance itself, permanent is not defined. When you go to the conditional use permit, where this was granted, the word permanent was not defined. And when you look at Matthew's proposed recommendation, he doesn't stop with the word permanent. He says, "Permanent and reserved." So, that means that's an additional requirement, and that put under, than, more than permanent. And on the way back through Cheryl's yesterday, I looked up, and the Life South bus for blood donors was right there in the middle of the parking lot. And I thought, well, I wonder if that counts as a parking space. They're taking up a dozen spaces. And my point here is that, under the terms, and this is a really important point, and I hope that the staff and we can figure this out, because it's going to be a lot easier if the staff and we figure this out. But the word permanent does not mean exclusive. And we benefit from the fact that we have this relationship with the adjacent property owner, where we have 30 to 40 spots. So, for practical purposes, we have 30 or 40 spots. And frankly, my client and I miscommunicated about bringing that document or presenting it to Matthew, and we'll have that right away. But again, as long as we've got 11 striped parking spots, and we have now installed pins, and we will have a surveyor show you that those 11 spots meet the minimum requirements, and I don't know if those are A.D.A. requirements or whose those are, but we'll show you that we have 11 spots, spaces. And basically, we use those spaces for parking during the week and for valet service during the weekend. And so, for 75% of the time, it is strictly for parking. For the other 25% of the time, it's for events. And then, those cars or the valet service just roll over right next door. And we're fortunate to be able to have that relationship. And respectfully, Mr. Chairman, you and I have known each other for a long time. And when you asked Tricia to address the violations, I thought this is going to be a big issue, because there's going to be, it's inclining, or there's an inclination to view the word permanent as exclusive. And it just doesn't mean that. And again, I hope we can find a way to work through that. Now, the more intense use, I hadn't thought about addressing that tonight. What I would like is an opportunity to talk with Matthew and the rest of the staff to see what that means. When I've heard numbers from Trish in the last 14 days about their usage, I'm not, I can't say 125 is troublesome. So, I just have to say no comment on that. Now, what have I left unaddressed? Please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add one more thing. On the 11 parking spaces, I guess when they, when it got approved, the conditional use approval, that was on the site plan for this .23 acres with the existing apartments and hall. So, that was originally delineated with the conditional use approval, that these 11 parking spots go with this. And it's my understanding that there was an additional off-site parking agreement or whatever, but it seems like these 11 spots were permanent spots here on this .23 acres, according to the August 3, 2017, conditional use approval. So, that's what, it looks like these are supposed to be there full-time.
Go ahead.
Well, I don't disagree, but the word permanent doesn't mean exclusive. And, you know, I, look, gentlemen's and lady, you know, I wish that's not where I was in terms of this argument. But under the rules that govern what I do in the practice of law, that is the logical interpretation, that permanent means it's not temporary. And those parking spaces are there, but it doesn't mean you have to reserve them. And one other thing I'd like to say, did I mention that there are 80 events reserved? And I know I sound like I'm being sarcastic, but I'm thinking, what in the world I do if we're subject to a May 7 revocation?
Okay. I would say some of those comments, like we were talking, when we know that might be open. That's a question I think we can run with Matthew, but I'd rather, we're already gotten rather lengthy. We needed to hear all of this.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that. Anything else, Richard?
No, thank you.
Okay. Then I'm going to go ahead and start going through the list and giving everybody an opportunity to speak. And please give your name and address when you come up, and I'll go ahead and start going through the, Rob Littleton?
I'm Rob Littleton. I'm part owner. Tricia mainly owns it. But anyhow, we have our 11 parking places. We've had them all along. I went out there the other day and took my transit, shot them in, and pinned them in. I got a stainless steel pin on all four corners of all parking places. We have them there. When Matthew came out there, he had a little 16-foot tape, and he was trying to measure them. And he couldn't. And what he found out, he said that one place lacked one foot on one end, because of the skew, clipped it off one foot. Well, all I had to do is move it further north, four inches. And we got our 19-foot. All those parking places are out there. They're there. They're pinned. And I've got a survey, and if I had a little bit more time, I only had three weeks, it takes longer than that to get a surveyor, I'd have that survey for you. I've got an as-built survey coming.
Okay.
And it's going to show all those parking places. They're there. They've been there the whole time. He said the south parking place wasn't quite big enough. Well, that's because they just measured over to the pine straw. You could have pulled up. Then the artificial turf, we have a, we have a letter from Vince Jackson with a landscape plan showing us where we're cutting the deck off, and we're putting artificial turf there. He approved. He showed the fence. And attached to that, and in that letter, he refers to our approved survey. He wanted a survey like I got right now. That south deck was on that survey that he approved. There was, and y'all, and you really missed a lot, Matthew. There's a big, he said, "I got this gap." Well, there's a gap of information. There was a lot of information going on. There were a lot of emails, and we have a lot of information from Vince telling us what to do, and we did all that. We have the 11 places. They are permanently reserved. He's talking about the safe access. He's talking about that island we put out there. Well, that island is artificial turf and pavers. You can drive across that island, straight into those parking places, and people do. It's not, they're not blocking it. We got that island there to keep people from trucks and trailers from pulling up just arbitrarily. For the agreement, I'm Rob Littleton. I'm mayor to Tricia Littleton. I have a lot on Sweetwater Circle that we use for off-site parking. And so, we've had it all along. I bought it years and years ago. It's a private street. It has a lot of parking places. It's about a mile from Little Point Clear. I shuttle everybody up there with my little bus. Then I've got an agreement with Mike Ford, our next-door neighbor, where I rent his property. I have rented his property for years. And y'all had questions about, you may have questions about the turf and the survey? Yeah, you were talking about?
I was talking about the deck reconstruction past the end of the setback.
That's artificial turf? It's not a deck?
One is on the south side.
Yeah, that one's on the approved survey that Vince Jackson approved.
Do you have that survey?
Yeah, we have it. Yes, uh-huh. Yeah. It's a date, September the 5th, 2017.
Just so there's no confusion, because this has been, I'll just say on the record, I have never seen a survey, a signed and sealed survey. For the, I've seen lots of site plans, lots of sketches. I have never seen a survey of this property from the applicant. If it exists, I would love to see it.
Yeah, we did. We got it. And you have it. I also didn't see that letter from Vince Jackson that attached.
I just wanted to provide that clarity for the planning commission, and you can continue to address the planning commission, just so we don't get off track there. I just wanted to provide that clarity regarding what's in your packet and what we have seen.
Mr. Littleton, can you, a couple of questions? I mean, assuming that this diagram that we're looking at in our packet is the one, you know, came from county records clearly, the one that was attached to Vince's letter, I mean, it shows the western deck, the rear deck of the property, extending 10 feet beyond the building as the Board of Adjustments approved. But it doesn't delineate any deck further beyond that.
Okay. We'll flip back over to the first page. Is first page on Vince's letter?
I don't have Vince's letter directly here in front of me. I'm looking, I'm looking at a drawing.
Yeah, well, first page of Vince's letter, he refers to approved survey. Yeah, well, first page of Vince's letter, he refers to approved survey. That's a site plan. He refers to the approved survey. And we have that approved survey.
Can you tell me who signed and sealed that survey?
Yeah, it was a Woodlands. He signed and sealed on 10-5 of 17. And Vince asked for it a lot. You know, this, you can't really see it, but you can see the artificial turf up there. You can see the decks there. You can see the parking places, and it says 10-5. And that's just, that's just the one he scaled in to fit on the paper. Because what it is, he asked for a survey, and the survey is 24 by 36. And Tricia hand-delivered him the survey of Woodlands. He approved it.
Well, if there is, this is not, I'm looking across my colleague's frame, there's no signature attached to it.
Yeah, that's because it's just a copy. Yeah, we have it, and we gave it to Vince.
Have you retained the Woodlands group to do the current?
No, I'm using Rowe, Automobile.
I just want to point a clarity so there's no conflict.
Yeah, I use Rowe, I could get Woodlands if you wanted me to. I just, Rowe is a big, huge firm, and they can get to it quicker.
Do you have a copy of that survey we could see?
Not with us. I've got it.
I think I see it, too.
You know, we have to do everything digitally these days.
Okay, anything else?
Got more questions?
Anybody got any more questions?
I mean, I know, I know a lot about the valet, valet parking, I do all the valet parking.
Yeah, I mean, my question is just, I can't read this, but if it exists, Matthew, why don't we have it?
I do not know the answer to that question. It is not in any of the files related to this application.
Nor is Vince's letter, or is that in the file?
I did not see Vince's letter in the file either.
You're really missing a lot. There was a lot went on there, there's a lot of letters, there's a lot of emails, and we have those.
I just like to see them, because, I mean, I see it, but I don't see it. So I'm just, because, I'm going to go back to one that we're kicking a dead dog, but not being able to read this, I see where you have turf. Our question on that is, is there a deck underneath the turf? There's no delineation?
No, there's not a deck underneath the turf.
What's underneath, but it's level, you built it up with dirt?
It's just dirt. The whole, the whole side is level. If you look at the site, there's probably not a foot or two difference in grade anywhere. The whole side is covered. The site either has gravel on it, or it has pine straw, or it has a wood deck. We're very, very, very small. We're very, very, we're .23 of an acre, everything's covered.
I've been by it many times, Vince, too. I just, I had no idea what was up there. I think that's all we can push off, so there's no decking underneath it.
No, there's no decking underneath it. No, we didn't cover up a wooden deck, but that, or, we landscaped all that. And we sent you a landscape plan, and you approved it. We sent you a fence plan, you approved it. And we have all that. And we actually, you know, anyway, I'm old person, I like, I like paper, you know, all this digital stuff, you know.
All right, any other questions? Okay, anything else?
If there's a lot more, you ought to ask me a lot more.
We got a lot more to go through.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mark, I'm not sure, is it Preel?
Pree.
Pree?
So my name is Mark Pree. I am one of those dads I talked about whose daughter is scheduled to get married at Little Point Clear on April the 30th. And I'm dreading a phone call I have to make to my little girl, simply because we've got a deck that's two feet too long, or we got astroturf, where astroturf doesn't belong. Talking about permanent parking spots, and it made me kind of think today, as I was driving through Mobile, I drove by Hank Aaron Stadium. And they've got a huge fair going on at Hank Aaron Stadium, and every parking spot is taken. I'm assuming those are permanent parking spots. I don't know, I'm not, that's not my, my business. But really, where I kind of want to approach this with, with the commission, and I do thank you for letting me speak to you, is not only the impact on Little Point Clear, but also the economic impact for Baldwin County if Little Point Clear loses their zoning. You know, 80% of my guests that are coming, hopefully on April the 30th, are from out of town. They're staying at the Hampton Inn in Fairhope, they're staying at the Grand Hotel, they'll be eating at Fairhope Restaurants, they'll be visiting Fairhope merchants, spending their money in Fairhope, corp with city and county taxes. I mean, there's a trickle-down economic effect in regards to what happens to Little Point Clear. So I hope that the planning commission takes all of that into effect, and not just, they built a deck and they shouldn't have built a deck. You know, those things can be replaced, they can be moved, they can be changed. But April 30th is a day I hope my daughter will remember forever, and not one, I have to make a phone call and say, hey, baby, I'm not sure where you're getting married now. That's all I've got to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Miller?
Hi, Chairman, my name is Tracy Miller, and I'm a longtime resident of Baldwin County down there in Battlesworth. I grew up down there, and it kind of says my heart that, that we're at this point, but not just here on a bunch of other levels, because I do own property on Twin Beach, Battlesworth, Point Clear, and I don't want 81. So y'all know what we're going through. But he was speaking from an economic impact, but Little Point Clear has brought so much value to our community. And when y'all, I noticed that you had her, then you listed as a country club. Well, we used to tread those woods back there in the country club that we were not allowed to go in. And Tricia has allowed our community to utilize that space. It has brought much value, and I appreciate the fact that we're welcome there. She supports the community. She support, that business supports our community in so many ways. And I would hate to see a four-foot, four-inch deck bring all this to a halt. I'm down there all of the time, and I see so many lives get started there. We're the beginning of a lot of lives. And I think that it's just sad that we're to this point, something so beautiful to be shut down for something so small.
Okay, thank you. Lynn McConnell?
I live at 311 Cumberland Road. I wasn't born in Baldwin County, but I've been here since the four-lane was just a two-lane, so I'm kind of a, I guess I'm grandfathered in somewhat. I, my family, Dr. Ives and I just, this past weekend, had our daughter, our only daughter celebrate her wedding festivities. They began at Little Point Clear. We had our rehearsal dinner there. People came from all over Alabama, many other states, New Orleans, saying that they have never been or seen any, a better space or a better well-run. The whole weekend just went so great. And the economic impact, hundreds of thousands of dollars generated just from our little event this one time. We started planning that wedding a year ago. And Tricia, there is no one other than Tricia that could run something so well. She's always just a wonderful entrepreneur, and I think as, as a fellow woman, business person, that needs to be applauded. And I can't take the, I am a family law attorney and printed 300 pages of the zoning ordinances this afternoon after court. But I'm also on the board of Sandy Ford in my neighborhood, and I understand that you have to follow rules. We also try in our neighborhood to work with people. And it seems like in the past, all the appropriate authoritative bodies have tried to work with her to keep this a viable business, which Ms., the last person who spoke, noted what it had done for the community. But it seems like to me, and actually, I stayed in that south suite with the deck that everyone's saying shouldn't be there. It was just the most wonderful time we've ever had. And we're going back just as residents of Fairhope to just go stay there for the weekend to get away, because it was just so relaxing and wonderful. You drive by it, it just makes you smile. It looked awful before Tricia took it over. The canopies and awnings, most of them, the two that are retractable, my 84-year-old mother would not have been able to get to the bridal luncheon on Saturday, Friday morning, were it not for those awnings from the parking area. So there's that. But in the regs, it, our zoning ordinance, in this process, you know, the letter, notice letter that was given to her should have given her, you know, a certain amount of time. I made some notes, but now I don't know where they went. The, allow a reasonable time to correct or abate the violation. It just seems very draconian to say, if you don't fix all this by May 7th, you know, then your use, your conditional use is revoked automatically. You know, Tricia will do what she's supposed to do, you just have to give her a chance to do it, and in fact, she'll do it in half the time that you give her. And I was kind of curious, just going forward, about the process of a formal complaint. Is that, I mean, I don't think that should be a text, I don't think that should just be an email picture. Is the, in 21.1.2, it requires, you know, the formal complaint to be lodged? And is that in the public records anywhere? Is that in writing? And is it in the public records? Because I printed everything that was listed under this P-15001. I don't know.
Matthew, you want to answer that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and that's a great question. So citizens can submit a complaint any number of ways to our office. We often have folks who just walk in and will give us a complaint, we'll note it down, and our code enforcement officers will look at it. In this case, they have been many by email and text message, mostly by email, and certainly all of that is part of the public record related to that complaint.
But it just wasn't posted on the website in connection with the meeting?
That's correct.
Such complaint shall fully state the cause and basis thereof, and shall be filed with the Planning and Zoning Director. You know, you have to actually have a document to be filed with it, so, but those are on record somewhere?
That's correct.
Okay, and where would one find that?
You can submit a public records request online and access anything from any of our complaints.
Okay, all right. And I would hope, I know May 7th, I mean, there's also, like it said, a reasonable time, 10 to 90 days. I don't think May 7th is even 90 days from now. But I would certainly ask that you consider the bigger picture versus just the technicalities like Mr. Davis said.
Okay.
Because I hope my daughter's wonderful event won't be the last one held at Little Point Clear.
Thank you. Chad and Amanda Vanderhayden?
Hi, my name is Amanda VanderHayden, and I live at 323 Whiting Court in Daphne. That was a wonderful presentation, I really appreciated understanding the nuance. I'm here definitely reiterating what others have said, which is that I've known this fine woman for 15 years. She is also a member of this community, and she runs a very successful business here. Again, I don't want to be redundant, because I know your time is going to run tight tonight, but it makes me shake in my boots as a business owner myself to think that a series of complaints could unfold in this way and lead to a series of requests to make corrections. And there seems to be evidence that, that attempts have been made to take those corrective actions, and then you could be summarily shut down with very short notice. I don't know about you all, I'm trying to renovate a home on the bay right now, you can't get anybody to do anything. So how in the world can you give someone such a short time to correct something? And I would absolutely think it would be a terrible, terrible legacy of your group to make a decision to cancel weddings, lifetime celebrations for people in the height of wedding season, graduation season, because you could not give someone a reasonable timeframe to take the actions that she's clearly willing to take. That's my comment. Thank you for allowing me to address your group.
Okay, thank you. Did Chad want to speak?
She spoke.
Okay. I understand that. Sarah Beth Fuller?
Hi, I'm Sarah Beth Fuller. This is so neat to do this. I'm a homeschool mom, so I'm really looking forward to showing her this feed. I wanted to speak to the character of Tricia. I parked incorrectly one of my first times at Little Point Clear. I'm partners with Julie Ragsdale with Noble Events. It's a wedding planning and coordination company. And Tricia let me know that I was wrong. She definitely told me from the top of me to the bottom of me to move my car. It was by the south side, my tail was in the, you know, out in the road, and she told me to move. And I'll never forget that. Every time I see her, I'm like, I'm so sorry about the parking. But every event that I've been at, and I have nine more events all the way into December at that venue, and thank you, you support my family so much. I know that she will take care of the parking. I know that we will tell all of those brides, we are all, we always assure them, and whatever you guys tell her to do, she's going to do it. She's going to do the parking, she makes sure that her vendors do the parking. I saw several of our cars in those pictures, and I promise you, had the pictures been taken five minutes later, you would have seen Trish just running across going, move your car. I had an owner of 10-10, it's a, it's a food truck. He, he came into the kitchen and he was like, gosh, that, that man, that, that Rob, you know, I can just see it in his face, he's so angry about the parking. I just want to be like, chill out, man. And I looked at him and I was like, if you want to look, if you want to work at Little Point Clear in the future, you'll just do what she says. And that's what we all do at Little Point Clear, if we just listen to Trish, and she has rules. She doesn't let us just do whatever. And the rules have changed in the last two years. The, you know, it was, we could do this, and then those, the, the little poles went up, and she tells us, she is like, don't you go outside those, those poles. And we now do that, all the staff there, we follow the rules, and we'll follow whatever the rules are, but whatever you decide, just please keep me, you know, Sarah Beth from 124 Richmond Road in Daphne, Alabama, and my three kids and my husband in mind, because you've done so much for us. Thank you so much, and hang you to Facebook.
All right. I'm not going to stop anyone from speaking, only everybody talk, but if we start getting repetitive, just don't let it run, because we're going to be here all night. I've got a lot more left here, so be quick. Mary Winslow-Allinger?
I didn't come prepared to speak, but Tricia, I've known her, she did my daughter's wedding 25 years ago. That started it, that's when I met her. I'm from Mobile, Baldwin County, and I used to live right down there at Point Clear. And I, I know Mike Ford, you mentioned Mike Ford. I have known that man all my life. If they say he can park there, they can park there the rest of their lives. I mean, that's, he is wonderful in this community. And all I have to say is, I'm so proud to know a female business successful woman that she is. She has done so much for this community. She has had many businesses, as all of you know. Every one of them, the next one's even more successful. And I'm proud to know her, I love her to death. She will do everything y'all tell her to do, just give her a little bit of time.
Thank you. Julie Ragsdale?
My name is Sarah Beth Fuller.
Okay. Cobb's the last name.
Cobb, Tyrus Cobb.
There you go.
Tyrus Cobb, sometime known as Ty Cobb. 10430 Rosewood Lane, Daphne, Alabama. It's a Daphne address, we actually live in the county, 181. Briefly, a character support. We knew Tricia for, for many years, but not well, just acquaintance. Built a house in 2014 and 15, and I'm, we hired her to do the interiors. I'm not here to brag on the house, but it wasn't a small job, and there were some testy points through getting this thing complete. points through getting this thing completed. But she was right there with us, and whenever I came up with any bad, bad ideas, she stood me up on it. But as a result of everything, we got a beautiful place to live, but also some great friends. We now see them all the time. We travel together. And if you can go through a business relationship like that, a tense one, and come out the other end with such close friendships, I don't know what better character position I could put her in. Thank you for taking my time.
Okay, thank you. Lori Ward.
Hi, Lori Ward, 418 Rosa Avenue. I'm just hoping that the council will just take some time and think in the spirit of collaboration, what is the solution, stay in the solution rather than just cutting off something that has been created that's so beautiful, that, again, back to the economics, I'm a small business owner. Little Point Clear with their weddings, their caterings, their parties, they employ florists and caterers, and, you know, to Tracy's point, it's not all about economics for Tricia and money. She often opens up that place for people free of charge, for photo sessions, for yoga classes, for things that people want to do to have a tea party, just to come meet. It's, it's the community country club where everybody's welcome. I just, I know that Tricia and Rob do what's right. I've been part of them trying to figure out the parking spaces where they've asked me to come park my big old Ford F-150 up there and see where they can fit it and measure it. I mean, I know that they will do the next right thing. I know that nothing they do is in the intention of getting away with something in their building. Awnings are for protection, the flooring, the landscape is, of course, beautiful because she's a designer, it's aesthetic, but it's also for safety, and she does the right thing for her clients. So I'd hate to see not only the 80 brides and grooms and families being disappointed, but the economy here, the florists, the caterers, the people in our area here that are small business owners. That's what Fairhope is about, small businesses, and this is one that contributes to the success of other businesses, not just her own. So, that's all I wanted to say, but thank you for consideration.
Thank you. Kathy Cobb.
Kathy Cobb, and you met my husband a moment ago. 10430 Rosewood Lane, Daphne, Malbus. We moved here to Baldwin County after 25 years in Mobile. We lived in the historic district, so I have great appreciation for the architectural review boards, for the historic societies, and the things that are required, both by zoning, commission, and then by that extra arm. In fact, I had two homes in the Oakley Garden District, so I understand, and I appreciate what you do. You often have to take a malnourished piece of property and turn it into something that's going to work, and I think that that is what Little Point Clear has done. Clearly, it's a very unusual shape of property. It was a very unusual and dilapidated piece of property, even though it was inhabited. I don't think that any of us would really want to live in those conditions. It was an awful setting that has changed dramatically, with every intention, it seems to me, to comply with all of your wishes. As a attendee tonight, I have been confused at some level why there are later letters and later acknowledgements and approvals that you all were unaware of. So beyond tonight, I think there is probably some work left for y'all to do, and that's a challenge for you. Government doesn't always make that easy. We appreciate your time, we appreciate your listening to people that feel vested in this property, just because it's done so much for us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And ladies.
Mrs. Jones. Steve White.
Good afternoon, my name is Steve White, 2118 Jubilee Trail, and to convey what everybody else has pretty much said here, I have a son that's getting married there next a year from April, and I was going to pass my time here because it seems like I'm, I'll just be repeating everything else, but I figured if I didn't say something, I'd get stabbed with a pencil for my wife. I've known Tricia a long time, I'm sure if the board would come up with some corrective actions for her to take care of, that she will do that. I would ask that the board also, or the commission also, keep in mind the amount of time that it's going to take, like one of the other speakers have said, that there's a lot of work going on out there right now, there's a lot of people busy, it, it takes a little time. A lot of you, I'm sure, has been in construction quite a while. Sometimes you, you tend to miss your marks. I'm not saying it was done intentional, or, you know, for any other reasons, but think of a corrective action, give it to Tricia, decide on the amount of time that you need, that you think that she can get it done in, and let's see where it goes from there. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Robert Adams.
My name's Robert Adams, and I live at 860 Creek Drive, Fairhope. I appreciate the overview you gave, it's something that's, I'm not aware of, I don't understand the planning, and I understand that y'all's task is, the planning commission is detailed. It's a matter of looking at the codes, looking at the advisements that you're given, and then applying those. But I hope that y'all will also take it a step further, and look at the community that we're in, and the area of Baldwin County that we live in. I'm relatively new to Baldwin County, we moved here 28 years ago, and so by most people's standards, I'm a newbie. And so I probably don't have that much of a vested vote in this, because I'm still new. My three children were born here, and they now live in San Francisco and Auburn, and at Fort Bragg in North Carolina. Last night, I was speaking to my son, and we were talking about this situation, and I mentioned what was going on, and he became a little bit disturbed and said, well, you know, I had always hoped to one day get married there, and I explained he first had to get a date, and then a girlfriend, and possibly that would help. But he sees this as home, his sisters see this as home, and they've known Tricia pretty much their whole lives. And Little Point Clear is one of those gems that we need to protect. I travel for work, I travel through the southeast, and invariably, people ask me where I'm from, and I tell them Fairhope. And they say, oh, that's a wonderful community. And a lot of the time, the first exposure to the area they've had is coming to a wedding at Little Point Clear. And I deal in medical sales, and you see these nurses get this faraway look in their eye when they think about it, and it's fond memories. I would implore you to go beyond the codes, look beyond the, the rules and the details, and consider small businesses of this area. We don't need any more strip malls, we don't need any more condominiums built, we don't need any more fast food joints. What we need are small businesses that are embracing this community, the community of South Baldwin. I have thought about this, and I think about the things that make South Baldwin so special, and the eastern shore in particular. To be a little bit divisive, we're not Gulf Shores, we don't have the condominiums, we don't have the massive traffic, but we have Jewel ones, and we have Jesse's, and we have Billy's Seafood, and the Battlesworth Market, and we have Little Point Clear. These are things that make us special. Please work with her, give her time, give Rob time, and allow them to fix what it is that needs to be fixed without shutting them down. This is a prized piece of Fairhope and of Baldwin County. Let's protect it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Mueller. Okay. Art Dias.
I'll go after Michael Linder.
All right, Michael Linder. And I have Jim Atchison, I don't know what order you're going to go in.
I think I might speak for all three of them by now, we're done, but if Art wants to add something.
Good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Michael Linder, I'm an attorney, I represent Mr. Art Dias. I'm here along with my mentor, Mr. Jim Atchison of the Atchison Firm in Mobile. I myself, however, am a resident of the People's Republic of Spanish Fort. I want to, I think Mr. Brown did a fantastic job of laying out what the committee's actual responsibilities are here, and what you're here to consider today, so I just want to make a few associated points. It was said earlier, there is not an emergency or a public safety situation here, there absolutely is. Mr. Dias knows of at least one person who, because of the parking and tent and other situations out there, both in where there's supposed to be a parking lot, and where there's the county right of way, which by the way, is completely clear all along Scenic Highway 98, except at Little Point Clear, which has moved practically out to the street itself. There's been at least one person that's been run off the road there. Mr. Dias and his family members, who are in the property directly to the south and have the driveway that abuts right along almost where that southern deck is, that is not supposed to be there, has trouble on an almost daily basis being able to see safely out up and down Scenic Highway 98. We appreciate that people have events scheduled there, things of that nature, but the real tragedy would be if a newlywed bride and groom are killed on Scenic Highway 98 because people can't ingress and egress properly from this facility, which is, I believe, one of the seven points Mr. Brown raised to you. Now, this facility is, it's been said several times, .23 acres. That is a very small footprint, that's a large tennis court. Frankly, even at 125 people, which it was never used for prior to 2015, even at 125 people, frankly, we don't believe this facility can be safely utilized. There are supposed to be 11 onsite parking spaces, and we heard a little talk about permanent is not defined in the audience. Well, ladies and gentlemen of the committee, the word 11 is not defined in the ordinance either, but I think we all know what that means. Permanent means always there. There are supposed to be 11 spots, clearly delineated, always there, and that has been the case since at least 2015, if not indeed 2017 as well, when Ms. Niemeyer and Little Point Clear were first up here on a violation of their conditional use permit. Again, I've heard everybody's remarks here, and I understand them, but the beauty of Little Point Clear is not really an argument. The popularity of Little Point Clear is not an argument. The character of Little Point Clear's owners is not an argument, and is specifically banned from being discussed here. The value to the community is not an argument. The argument is, are they in violation of their conditional use permit? If so, how, and what is to be done about it? I think Mr. Brown did a fantastic job of laying that out, chapter and verse to you. Vince Jackson, I don't know what he said, Vince Jackson isn't here. What you did hear Mr. Brown say was that letter was not in his materials, and at the risk of stating the obvious, Vince Jackson was not authorized, even if he tried to do so, to change decisions of this committee. It is up to the enforcement division to look, find violations, and for this committee to evaluate that, along with all the evidence. Now, again, the seven factors Mr. Brown laid out are what we're here on. Those were not adequately addressed by anyone that has come up here to speak in support of this, in support of Little Point Clear tonight. There's been talk about accommodating Ms. Niemeyer in Little Point Clear, and again, we're all for accommodation, but the moment for accommodation was in 2017, when she was already in violation of the 2015 conditional use permit, and she was extended by this committee time and the opportunity to come in compliance and given more leeway. She has continually expanded the facility since then. That parking lot, and I, it's almost a misnomer, because the committee can see from the pictures Mr. Brown showed you yourselves and all that, that it isn't a parking lot, it has been used, obviously and indisputably, to expand the footprint of the facility, so they can fit 125, 150, from our count, sometimes 200 people in there. And that is, that has been a gradual expanding use. The facade of the building has been pushed out literally into where those 11 permanent parking spaces are supposed to be. The deck has been re-added, I, I heard Mr. Littleton, but I myself have been out there, and that's either a deck with astroturf over it that has been re-added since this committee told her to remove it, or else they've, if you take him at his word, he's pulled earth up and then put astroturf over it to expand the deck, it is flush with the deck, you saw the pictures yourself, the deck has been expanded back to the property line. So again, this is not a popularity contest, I, I feel for beautification of the community and all of that, but again, what the committee is here to consider are the seven concrete, indisputable violations of what this committee has already authorized, and we would just ask that the committee abide by that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, either of you guys want to say anything in addition? Okay.
Good evening, my name is Art Dias, I live at 18261 Scenic Highway 98. I would suggest to you, I'm the only one that lives in close proximity to Little Point Clear, my driveway is immediately on the south side. There are a number of issues, and I'm going to just touch on a couple. I heard that there was no communication, no dialogue about the safety aspects of what goes on at Little Point Clear, and I'm here to tell you that that is as erroneous as anything that I have heard for years now. I've been in my house since 2007. Little Point Clear, as you now know, came into existence in 2015, so I was there eight years before they ever started that facility. It was fine to start off with, but every, it seems that every other day, something else is done that changes the complexity of it. Now, on pages 11, I think it's pages 11 and 12 of the, of the handout that Matthew Brown provided to the planning commission, that you will see a number of pictures. Those pictures have gotten, it's gotten so extreme that it's ridiculous. Immediately south of my property, and where my driveway comes out, most of those pictures were taken from my driveway. Up to the north, there is a curve. That curve is not very far, but anything that parks in the right of way of that highway obstructs the view to the north. Now, I'm here to tell you, I will do anything in my power, I will spend any money that I have to protect my son, my daughter-in-law, my friends, my family, and myself from, from getting killed out there on that highway. And it's not a matter of, of if someone is going to be injured or killed. If you look at those pictures, there is no way that you can get out of our driveways, Presbyterian, Government Street Presbyterian Church. Baytree, y'all familiar with that? Baytree has got kids that come there all summer. They have to exit that place also. And it's not the permanent nature of a parking place that's in the right of way, it can be a delivery truck. The other day, it was, it was, it was a truck and a trailer that was attempting to remove one of the tents that they have used for additional people in front of the building, and where was he parked? He was pulled in, and he was all the way to the edge of the, of the pavement. I tried to get out of my driveway, and it's, you just take your life in your own hands. So what I'm, what I'm going to tell you is, they have done nothing to correct that issue. There's supposed to be 11 onsite parking places. That's what, that's what was afforded to them in 2015, 2015. And now, it's, no, it's two parking places and a tent for most of the facilities or the, the events that are handled there. And, and it is, it is a wonderful, beautiful place, but it's on a small lot, and it's something got to happen. Now, we, and I'm going to use that term, and it's not loosely, but we as planning commission members, and I was on this committee, commission for many, many years, I was up, now I'm on the Fairhope Planning Commission, and I will tell you that there are things that we all understand. First of all, these hearings with a number of people that come, it's not a popularity contest, it's not how many people are for or against, it's all about the rules and the regulations of the planning commission and, and the planning department that are in place. And with that said, if we don't do for, for all that we allow one to do, we in trouble. If we start a precedent, we're not willing to carry on forever, we got a problem. And all I can tell you is that whatever decision that you do make, and I encourage you to think about it, there's, there's bound to be a way, but, but the parking issue and, and the numbers of people that are there are a real, are a real problem. And I ask you, in your infinite wisdom, let's figure it out, because it can't go, it can't go on like it is. If you look at those pictures, that is a death trap, and it is going to happen. And thank you for your time, and thank you for your participation on this. It's a very thankless job, to say the least. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay, that's all. Was there anyone that was left out? Wait a minute, anyone left out? Okay.
Can I please say one little thing?
Are you, are we going to have a follow-up? I'm going to let, I'm going to let you folks, if they're I'm gonna let you folks, if there's, since you're the applicant, if you've got a follow-up to this, so you're gonna speak for them?
You know, this is my comparison.
Okay.
This is Art's driveway looking the other way. That's Art's mailbox. He's very concerned about safety. He's a forestry major, so why didn't he cut all those limbs? Why didn't he get the highway department? He can't see at all to the south. That's his driveway looking the other way.
Okay.
You know, and why wouldn't you cut those limbs? That's his driveway looking the other way. Worried about his children, and all those limbs, you can't sit down and rather not?
Listen, I'm not taking it for one side or the other, but I understand from what I see on paper, so that's another issue, but we're looking at this one. Any other response from the applicant before? I'm gonna bring our staff back up.
Ladies and gentlemen, as you review this and all the pictures, because as we do now in the pictures that are...
You'll need to come to the mic somewhere, get you on speaker.
The pictures have two sources. The first is the complainant, and all those are his pictures. I request that they be authenticated. You're just looking at what was provided for you. If you actually do a, make a site visit, what you will see when you are in his driveway in the true line of sight is that in order to take that picture, anytime you see that political sign or his mailbox, he has backed up about 20 feet to take that picture, and it's completely false. I can provide you pictures with tents, because we have made a big deal out of tents tonight. So, let me just say, gentlemen, the tents are 20 feet wide. Our parking spaces that have already been subject of a lot of conversation are 19. It is mathematically impossible for a 20-foot tent, regardless of the length of it, to block a line of sight. We are very grateful that the county came out and did the right-of-way survey, because prior to that, we really never had a specific clue where the right-of-way was. We, I thought it was the telephone poles. I was told it was the telephone lines. I'm very, very, very disappointed in the county that my sign that was erected on the same post that had been there for 30 years, when I filed for the sign application that was approved in the county and in the city, that was installed on the same four-by-fours that had been there since the 1970s. It was removed the next day. I never knew it was in the right-of-way. But thanks to the county and the new right-of-way survey, we know where to be and where not to be, and we're not gonna be in your right-of-way. And we did encroach before, but we weren't clear on it. And so, our 20-by-whatever tents, they're not in your right-of-way, and they're not in a line of sight. Period. They don't necessarily have anything to do with an expansion. This is Alabama. First and foremost, COVID did a whole lot for this, and nobody's even mentioned that. One of the reasons that Little Point Clear is and has been so successful and grew so fast is because we have five French doors that open up, and it's a very inside-outside, and we could socially distance. Our first reschedule, that was like 100-something people, and I was worried if 30 were gonna show up after COVID, they all came. They had masks and walkers and tennis balls on their little things, and it was beautiful. And you know why? Because these people didn't want to go to a ballroom where they had to enter and punch elevator buttons and walk down a corridor. So, be frustrated that it is what it is. I had no idea how successful it would be. We're trying to do the best we can as good neighbors. What you are being presented here tonight is not authenticated. Please come out and take a look at it. This wonderful man that I hired two weeks ago, that met me on a Sunday morning, by all circumstantial evidence, and you have it all, it's all on paper, we're horrible. Yes, this is a witch hunt, and you should remove us. And then, he comes out, and he tours the property, and he listens, and he looks at all the pictures, and he says, "I don't really understand what the problem is. This is the most well-oiled machine I have ever seen. You've figured out all the issues." And trust me, there are many issues, and safety is first and foremost, which is why the median out front, I know your neck is killing you, you want me to shut up. I read you, sister, brother, all of it.
I'm glad.
Okay.
Keeps me from having to say it, but we need to move on.
One last.
Okay.
The picture from Mr. Brown, taken when, I don't know if it was when you woke up and looked at our Facebook or decided to have a cocktail drive and go down scenic 98 and take a picture of my tent off the right-of-way. I appreciate that, because we never knew it was off the right-of-way. After we received the violation for right-of-way, we immediately cut the shrubs down, we immediately removed our sign, and we have never, moving forward, had a tent on the right-of-way. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman. Any questions of the applicant? Are you ready to meet, talk with Matthew?
Yeah, I need to...
Okay, Matthew, you want to come on back up?
Well, Matthew, it's really, very quick, can you project our, the seven items? Either project, or do you have a hard copy of those that we could put in front of us?
Yes, sir, we'll put that back up on the screen.
I do have a couple of questions for the applicant here that...
You're gonna have to wait, she just left the room.
Oh, well, perhaps her.
I do, yes.
Okay. Given all that has gone on with this, and I live not too far from there, and I was down there yesterday. You've got rope instants on the right-of-way.
Yeah, that's to keep people from pulling in. We have a real hard problem. It's a parking lot out there, and we didn't put the parking lot there. We put, but we put those ropes there to keep people... What happened? People just pull in all the time. We'll get there one morning, and there'll just be a motorhome sitting there that spent the night there.
But you are in the right-of-way with that. Is that correct?
Rope to stand, yeah, to keep people from pulling in. Yeah, we don't park in the front. We don't park in those parking places.
Well, can you then better explain to me where your 11 parking spaces are with the tent that is there and has been there for at least two weeks? When this first started, as I say, we lived down close to there, and there was an event going on at Little Point Clear.
We have 30 parking places.
Next door.
Next.
Next door. Are they marked at all?
Yeah.
Have you marked them since two weeks ago? Because the parking back there was all over the place.
Yeah, we have little stands with a reflector on it. We have, they're marked.
With all due respect, sir, if you...
I mean, no, Mike Ford's is not...
If you would care to look at these pictures at your event that I took a week and a half, two weeks ago, yeah, yeah, but there's no parking marked. They're parked this way, that way, et cetera. And you go to the front, and you've got the same situation with cars parked up on grass, some on the other side, which probably is in the right-of-way.
At Mike Ford's, they can't park in the right-of-way because it's trees.
Okay, well, I just, I don't understand why, we go back to the issue of the ability to have 11 parking spaces on the property. Mike Ford's property is not your property. You may have a lease on it, but your conditional use says that you will have 11 spaces.
Mr. Chairman.
And where are they?
And, kind of commissioner, I do want us to be careful about discussing too much stuff that's actually not part of the record. You can provide those photos to us so we can make that part of the record moving forward, but it puts everybody kind of in an awkward situation to discuss something that we can't see. All right, let's...
And what I'll do, I'll, let me get over here so you can hear me. I have penned them out, but they could have moved around a little bit in the past, but now they are penned out by pen. There's a metal pen in all four corners of every single parking lot. I have row engineering. They said they're gonna come out this week, and they're gonna do a new as-built survey, and those parking places will be on there. They're there. I surveyed it with my transit. Hang on. This is my transit. I shot them in. I'm old time, I don't have a feeling a lot. I use transit, return the 90. Wrong. Okay, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. But anyway.
Well, again, I go back to you've got rope instants there, and how do people get to the parking spaces with rope instansion and then a tent on the, right there on the property? It may not be...
We don't want people pulling up, we don't want people pulling up parking in our front yard. We want a parking next door. There's a sign that says, "Little Point Clear Parking," right there.
Right, yeah.
And we want you to, we want you to pull next door, and you can park anywhere you want over there.
All right. Okay. Matthew, if you'll come back up. Let me see if I can frame this. Folks, please understand, we're not interested in shutting down all of your children's wedding events. If you're hearing that, and you think there's body language that's telling you that, then you're misreading all this. We are here to deal with the issues that have been brought up. Matthew outlined something. This planning commission can either accept those conditions and make an approval and discuss dates, or we can come up with something entirely. I don't make the motion, this group will, but I would like, just for us to have a starting point, I would like to deal with the seven. I thought you did a good job, Matthew, of outlining the seven issues. Now that I've heard everything, I'd like to go through those to see if some of those are valid or not. Maybe it requires that we have an onsite visit with staff and the applicant to be very specific about some questionable items, and then those that aren't questionable, I would like to see, again, I'm not interested in shutting down the event, but I am interested if those issues are valid, that they be addressed. And it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, they could be. So, let's, if you don't mind, Matthew, let's go back to that and...
Sure. Now, when you say go back to that, are you talking about right now, or you're just saying in this, you want this...
I'm gonna go back to it right now.
Let me point out a couple of quick things, and then we'll run back through those. One reason we chose the May 7th date here is that this is three days following a scheduled planning commission meeting. And so, even if there's this automatic revocation looming, or if you chose not to make your motion with the automatic revocation, it could be that you are gonna hear this at the May 5th planning commission meeting to see how they've resolved these issues. So, this date was chosen in a way to make sure we're not pinning ourselves into something, and to your point that we're, the goal isn't here to try and shut down a business or an establishment or anything like that, but to make sure that there's an opportunity to evaluate that progress if necessary at that May 5th meeting. So, just knowing that that is an option there, we could just, you could say, you know, Matthew, we're gonna make this motion, and we want to see the progress they've made on May 5th. So, that's an option out there. The other thing I wanted to point out is Vince Jackson's letter, and this was referenced separately, but this planning commission is the only body who has the authority to approve a conditional use or modify a conditional use. So, what was approved on August 3rd, 2017 is the last approval related to this conditional use. There have been no subsequent approvals, okay, related to this conditional use. I don't know the purpose of that letter on January or in 2018. It does say that future decks and any parking or changes of use must come to you for a review. I don't know if that was part of a zoning verification, I just don't know, but it was not an approval or an amendment to that conditional use. And then, the final thing I'll note real quickly, and we can actually note this as we go back through the different items, what I'll do is we'll step back to that list. But in terms of required parking, and I think, I think that a lot of these issues can be resolved, but the big issue, the more difficult issue to resolve, is the failure to reserve those required spaces for parking. And here's the list of the violations, I'll put this back up on the screen here. And the zoning ordinance specifically states permanently reserved, so that was not my language, I did not fabricate that. That is directly from our zoning ordinance that those spaces must be permanently reserved. And now, Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to you. If you want to just kind of talk through these one at a time, if you want to jump to some different maps, I'll defer to you on this now.
Well, unless some of my constituents want to do otherwise, I just can start from the beginning and just try to go down the list, and let's discuss each one and see if we can eliminate something, or let's be very clear on that condition so that we make a motion that we have it cleared up before we do that.
And, Mr. Chairman, on this first one, the reconstruction of disallowed decks, the southern deck was clearly disallowed, they removed it, and they have added that, so that's something that I think that they have essentially...
It was never removed, excuse me, it was never removed.
All right, let's go through these slides and the pictures. So, we're focusing first here on the rear deck, just in the order here. Again, this is what was approved at that August 3rd conditional use meeting, and again, this is not a survey, unfortunately, it's just a site plan that was on here.
Matthew, real quick, this is the site, well, you may have just answered that question. This was the site plan that was part of that conditional use approval.
That's right, the August 3rd, 2017 amendment to the conditional use.
And this is in the record?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And as you can see there, it was approved with 10 feet. So, then the question becomes, what has been added here? And I'm gonna put Ori King on the spot here, he was actually present when this photo was taken, and this was, Ori, from what y'all could tell, did it appear to all just be backfill of soil back there, or did there appear to be some structure underneath?
We did not verify what was underneath the turf, so I can't answer that question.
And that's fair enough. No, I'm putting you on the spot there a little bit.
So, can we be very clear on this one? If, in fact, it is dirt that they've just put astroturf over, is that a violation in any way? In my opinion, it would not be, but I, from the moment I saw this, I was under the impression there was a wooden deck underneath that, that they put astroturf over. If there's not a deck under it, I don't see the difference between having a lawn behind, extending that, somebody put chairs on it. I really don't see the difference. So, is this an issue or not?
So, if indeed it is just backfilled with soil, that's probably not an issue.
Yeah.
And that's something we can verify onsite.
What about concrete?
If it was backfilled with concrete, or cinder block, or any type of structure that's, this has been the surface of that deck, because you can surface a deck with many different surfaces, then this would be a violation.
We're beating a dead horse. Is it a deck, or is it, you know, dirt raised up with...
We're gonna have to verify that.
Well, the point, the point that I was, that I was trying to make was, and this may be jumping ahead, because it's gonna get down to probably number seven, is it's my understanding that if you do anything that increases the footprint of this particular quote-unquote "structure"...
Does that not require the resubmission of the site plan that we would have to look at, because you've changed the footprint?
All I'm gonna say there is that's something I would want to talk, that we're starting to wade into a very complex legal analysis as to whether or not that is contributing to their use or not contributing to their use. Is it merely an architectural addition? And that's something I'll have to evaluate with legal counsel separately. Do you mind providing your microphone up, Mr. Seabird? I think that one's running out of batteries.
Well, this one seems very simple to me, and I don't want to complicate it. To me, we just look, and if we find that it's a buildup with dirt and they put astroturf on it, I don't see the issue. Now, when we get to a point making a motion, we can address it then, but if we find that it's anything other than dirt, then I think we may be looking at a deck, and we have to consider otherwise. I think that falls in what you're saying, it changes things, they have to come back for approval.
All right, so we'll...
What's the second item?
All right, so the next one was the south side deck. So, what you have on the screen here is what was provided by the applicant. They displayed an existing deck at this location that had been constructed, and we have photos from this time period that was with the complaint. And in fact, we showed those with the complaint in the timeline that they had constructed this deck here. So, then the next photo you see here is one that was taken on May 8th, 2019, as part of their architectural review board application sometime later, and at this point, you can see the deck has been removed.
That's wood, that's wood. It's concrete, it's all wood.
Well, there is, there is concrete, there is a wooden step there.
The deck behind the concrete.
But the, there's a small wooden step there, and, Mr. Chairman, for the sake of the audience, there's a small wooden step there that still exists, and we can go forward to this next picture. You can see that wooden step there, but you can see that the concrete patio has now been recovered with a new deck.
Okay.
Would you go back to the picture? There you go. You can see the steps. The step is elevated, and then you can see the deck. It's concrete, it's all...
Anyway, that's...
Matthew, is it, I'm not driven by, but there's a fence there that may obscure what it looks like now versus then, or is that in your picture versus this picture?
That fence had not been constructed in 2019 yet. It's in here, and again, I don't know what else to tell you here, but the sketch that the applicant provided said this was 10 feet 4-inch... the applicant provided said this was 10 feet 4 inches from the wall in 2017. Ori King was present when this photo was taken, and it's 12 feet 5 inches from the step in this situation. And, you know, we can zoom in on the photos, and it's clear what's there, but we don't, we're not, there's no need for us to bicker about it.
Bottom line is, there's a deck in this picture right here, and you're saying that that was not allowed?
That's right.
Okay.
Not allowed in the 2017 approval.
All right.
All right, the next thing was parking spaces not meeting design standards. I'm going to jump right to the final image here on this one. And from our review onsite, they had made 11, spot number 11 comply in terms of the dimensions, and eight and nine, they just needed to remove some landscaping, or move some landscaping back, and move some fence and gate a little bit, and they could make those likely comply as well. But, but to be clear, they would need to be in full compliance.
So the rub, I think, that's going to come with this one is, these need to be 11 spaces, permanent spaces, not used for tents, which I would assume is going to be detrimental to the business because of what they're doing there. But that's the rub, as I understand it here, is that we are requiring 11 parking spaces not to be used for tent coverings, and used parking across the road. 11 spaces there, and then any other additional parking through an agreement offsite.
That's right, and that's technically the next point focuses on that permanent reservation of parking spaces, number three, in terms of what's required in the ordinance. Now, again, I want to remind everybody that there is an option here called the Board of Adjustments, where you can request a variance. You can request permission to, and I know this seems almost like a harsh way of saying it, but you can request permission to break the rules, and make your case why your property is situated in a way that it justifies breaking the rules. So that avenue is available to them in this case as well. So I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Okay.
Matthew, quick question before you move on, Mr. Chairman. If you read the next part of that statement, permanently reserved for the temporary storage of one automobile. And there are many cases in small businesses that they use parking spaces to park a car in, they put a tent in, park a trailer in, park, put a fair in, put tents in, and so I would just say, I think what's important to me is to read the entire sentence. It's a temporary park for an automobile. It doesn't mean the automobile has to be there, but it's available.
Could somebody help us with where the tent is based on that picture, or that drawing?
Here, I'll take care of this. So the tent, when it was up there, when I happened to drive by the site, if you can see the mouse on the screen, I know this is a little difficult to see, but it approximately came down, the corner of it came into the right-of-way, and then it extended back like this. Now, what they told us when we visited them onsite on February 17th, I believe it was, is that they were going to now start using a smaller tent that no longer encroached into the right-of-way.
It seemed to be, you know, on this point as well, a survey could verify the size of these spaces in relation to the right-of-way. You know, I don't, you know, working for a company that has surveyors, I don't know a surveyor who would put a stamp on something that wasn't correct. So that's something that we could easily get verified, I think, moving forward.
Well, I have no issue with the parking spaces being verified, they meet the requirements. It's more the tent issue, I think, that needs to be resolved, whether or not that's allowed or not. And if it was allowed to be in these temporary spots, it is increasing the use of the facility, the footprint of the facility, that would require, in my opinion, coming back and getting an approval for.
And you raise a great point there. So if they say, well, we don't, we want to be able to use this for event space, the number of required parking spaces they were required to provide was based on the square footage of their event space. And in this case, they're essentially saying, well, we want to significantly expand that. And so technically, it would require a recalculation of the required parking for the, for the site.
125 the number that works here?
Okay, so, the way that this was calculated, unfortunately, was for office space. Well, I'm going to just say that's not what it's being used for. The way, if this application came to our office today, we would treat this as an auditorium or a church-type calculation, where there are events being held, and we would require one parking space for four seats. But that's not before you today, because it was approved twice by this planning commission for just 11 parking spaces. And that's been approved twice, and we're not asking you to change that, but it would not, that's not the calculation we would be using if it came to us today.
You said one per four?
One per four seats.
Matthew, just, again, I'm asking, if a church had an event, they put a tent in the parking lot, and they had to bus people in, how do they get the approval for that tent in Fairhope? I know Daphne, but I don't, what, what do they do in Fairhope to get the approval for the tent?
I don't know the answer that you're talking about, within the Fairhope city limits specifically, or just in this area?
Well, it sounds like the building permits and everything are coming out of Fairhope, so the overlay is falling, so they're having, they're having some stuff done in Fairhope, some stuff by the county, but if they're, who's granting approval for the tent? For example, in Daphne, if you're going to put up that, you have to have a level of approval to do an event, a permanent tent or semi-permanent. So I didn't know if in Fairhope, if there is such, or...
That's a great question. We'll look into that, and see if there is any type of approval process, or application process that they go through when they put up some type of a tent like this.
The reason I say that, because if you then have offsite parking, it probably allows that, which would then make it a moot point on the 11, if you have the parking offset.
And one point of distinction with churches and other events is, a lot of times, those are truly temporary. It's not every single weekend that tent is up occupying those spaces. And, and so, whereas this, the tent is truly being used to expand the permanent commercial footprint of this facility.
Matthew, this may jump ahead, but the agreement that was required, was it for a specific number of parking spaces offsite, or just an agreement for?
It did not specify that, so if they bring that agreement forward, they'll be satisfying that with very little problem. I expect that'll be a very simple one for them to satisfy. I do think that the other one that does require some notes, and, and again, we don't, it's not that we don't think there's a path forward here, I think we've specified a path forward with every, with every single one of these items. I realize the biggest question could be the tent, or them utilizing this space to expand their event space. But we would be happy to have an engineer sign and seal a parking plan that shows they have safe access for these 11 vehicles to park here. We think there are legitimate safety concerns, and that's why the conditional use process exists, about how vehicles flow on and off this site. And, you know, a path forward there would be to have an engineer who's willing to put his stamp on it and take on the liability, to say, yes, this is a safe parking pattern to access these lots, and it meets the standards of practice in the industry.
I'm sorry, but that, but that still sounds to me like we're, we're stuck in the permanency of these, of these reserved parking places, even though nine words later, you're talking about a temporary house for a car, or a temporary spot for a car, so there's not going to be one there all the time.
Well, and, and I appreciate Mr. Nance's comment, and I would...
Well, I, you know, and it's, but it, no, it's important.
Sure.
Because, because again, I guess I would add, I would back that up, within the county, what, what is a, you know, what does a business do in the county if they want a, Centennial Bank wants to run a promotion in their parking lot, and they put, and they go put a tent up? Do they, does that require a site plan be submitted?
Sure. So a couple of things to note here is, they are forcing a lot into a very small lot. They're forcing a lot of things into a very small lot. Some sites have far in excess of their required parking, and then it's no problem for them to do things like that in that overflow parking. And in most businesses generally have some overflow parking that is available. In this case, they are forcing a lot into a very small thumbprint here, and therefore, they have no overflow parking to allow for other uses.
So Matthew, even if they, part of the safety part for me is, if they get their required parking on their property, they still have to have an area to back out. So the question then is, for the type of parking they have, we have a requirement, I believe, I understand, to be 24 feet. Is there 24 feet from the backside of those parking spaces to the edge of the pavement, so that there's, you know, they can actually maneuver once they get out?
So that is a great question.
Are they backing out into the roadway?
And I'm going to tap Linda Lee here, who was very involved in this approval process early on in supporting Vince Jackson. Vince Jackson was the one who spearheaded a lot of this early on, and has been very helpful with me through the process. Lynn and I have worked very closely on this. And there was questions early on about whether this parking was quote-unquote "grandfathered" as-is, because you're right, it doesn't technically meet all the standards that would be required. And so it came in, in, with some level of grandfather status, based on this use having been here for a long period of time. So there is an argument that the fact that they don't have a perfect 24 feet is something that, that could be taken into consideration based on that grandfather status. However, if we had, as a conditional use, they're saying, we're recognizing, hey, listen, this is kind of pushing the borders of what would normally be allowed in a situation like this. So we feel like a reasonable request would be to make sure we have something, again, from an engineer, saying, we feel that this is a configuration that results in safe access to these 11 parking spaces, that's safe and reasonable, and again, that they're willing to put their, their stamp on.
Matthew, question. So we've got grandfathered parking that probably won't, an engineer won't stamp. They, they're using it here for valet parking. And I'm trying to get us to where we can go through the points and actually check them off, and get them accomplished. So it's, it looks like for the commission, if, to amend the parking with that offsite parking agreement, so you didn't have the 11. So you're, because you're forcing something here that obviously they're violating. Whether they choose to or not, you're not meeting it. And we can't, there's nothing we can do, we can approve it tomorrow, and there's not, an engineer's not going to stamp that, because you're not going to, you know, they're, they're at risk, if you will, because they've approved something that's not valid. And the commission, I wasn't on it, approved grandfathered parking spaces for a building that today probably never would be built. It never would be built. So I'm just, to the, Mr. Chairman, it probably is, you're not looking at 11, you're looking at some other number that then allows for safety, allows for event space, allows for anything else, and then addresses the neighbor's visual, you know, if you have an agreement next door, that it just, it occurs next door. And so then, then it gives you something that's enforceable, that everybody leaves and you solve both. But if we're trying, we've got a square peg in a round hole here, and so I don't know how we're going to get with, with the points. I agree with the point, it's got to be safe, but I don't know how you do it safely with what we're trying to vote, so that would be...
And again, that comes back to, if that engineer wanted to propose finding some way to ask for an amendment to this conditional use where all the parking is offsite, well, let them engineer that for us. Instead, they want essentially the, staff is not going to give a blessing without some type of engineering approval on that safety.
I'm just trying to figure out, we can't vote on 11 if it won't work, and we can't figure out another one. Can I just say something?
I defer to the chairman on that.
It's about that.
Okay.
That's exactly what we did. We never park in those places, never. We don't think it's safe, we don't, we don't like the looks of it, we park next door.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll ask it to you, and you could pass it out to the applicant or not.
Would we ask for an engineering study, would they be agreeable to that? And so that way, it would address neighbors' issues, safety issue, the other issues. Have you asked and been told no?
So, you know, when we met them onsite, we addressed this tent space and the not, the inability to occupy that for an event. And they basically said that is, that is a no-go on that issue. And, and now we, we can, again, we're happy to work with them. That's why this meeting had to happen, for all of us to get these issues in front of us and decide, now, here's, here's the issue. There was a lot of deference given to this site when it was originally approved, a lot of deference. You kind of rip off the Band-Aid in some ways when you go through, if you start to try and use offsite parking to be your official parking lot, and get rid of those front spaces. So for instance, our zoning ordinance requires a loading and unloading space, for exactly the reason we have heard many times tonight, that there are large vehicles that pick up tents, drop off tents, deliver other items to the site, and there is no space for them to park other than the right-of-way right now. And that is the reason for there being a requirement for a loading and unloading space. So it is true, if they want to do amended conditional use, they're going to have to comply with all the requirements of the zoning ordinance on that neighboring site, and they may be able to do it, and that, that may be a great solution here. So we just have to understand kind of the can of worms that's also being opened in that situation as well.
If that was around, it would take time.
It would take time, yes, sir.
And the unloading and the zone, I mean, they do it downtown, we do it downtown Mobile. You do after-hours, before-hours, etc., so there's, for parking, and big trucks can't come during a certain time, those types of things, so.
But I guess they can't park in the right-of-way regardless? They can't park in...
No, they can't park, I mean, they never can. I mean, that's where we'd have to remove, so they can get out of the right-of-way, that other, it's a can of worms, Matthew.
Yeah, you're right, you're absolutely right.
Can I say something about that point, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
This is our neighbor across the street, this is what you're talking about. This is literally across the street, they don't have anywhere to unload, they back a truck up. Let's just add one more here.
And we'll make all this part of the record, moving forward.
And they did this all day, I just happened to get down there for an event, and this is across the street, and you can see all the traffic block backing up, and they've got a big truck, and the truck's hanging over the sidewalk in the road, because they have nowhere to unload, there's a bunch of houses over there.
Well, I think you're making a different point, though. You're saying, if somebody else is doing it, why can't we?
He's right, there's a problem.
Yeah. And some of these things existed before zoning came into place, too, so we can't go back and fix everything, so...
Mr. Little, if you don't mind leaving those up there, we'll scan those in and make them just part of the record. All right, the fifth item was the proof of offsite parking, we've already addressed, that should be simple to resolve. The sixth was failure to obtain permits for canopies, awnings, and fences. The most...
I have a question, does a tent classify as an awning?
So the, a tent, if it's being used on a permanent basis, would be like an accessory structure in that type, in that situation. The tent question's a pretty unique question, and, but the issue here specifically are these awnings that have been added, and, in the back and in the front. And again, we're happy to talk to the applicant about that, and I think some of them may be retractable. You know, that's part of what we're, we're happy to discuss, and there might be an argument that the retractable ones don't end up, you know, can, can remain. But that's something that we, we can discuss, but there are some that are clearly more permanent in nature. And the reality is, we require everybody, we are not respecters of persons, if, if they want to put in a, some type of overhang or canopy, they have to get a land use permit. And we're not being a respecter of persons here, they have to do the same thing. They don't have a pass on these, these permit requirements. And so I think this is something we can work through, and we're happy to hear a resolution they propose to this one.
Well, wait a minute, the resolution on this one seems to be only permitting?
That's right, that's right. So some of them, if some of them are retractable, we can, we're happy to look at that, but any of the permanent ones are going to have to be removed, and it could be temporarily removed until they get the permits in place and stuff like that, and then they can request, some of them may need variances. Well, then they'll have to go through that variance process as part of that. And then the final thing was the increased intensity of event venue use. Again, what we have seen communicated throughout is that it seems like the planning commission was being told that this event venue was being used for up to 125 attendees, and, so we feel like that's the intensity that... that was approved on August 3, 2017. And again, as long as they're willing to commit to that, this, this would be easy to, to resolve per se.
How do you regulate that?
That, I mean, that's something that can be difficult to regulate in, in any situation. You know, it's kind of like the fire code and fire occupancy. It can be difficult to.
That's what I was going to ask. Do they sprinkle the building, fire marshals inspected and done that? It's for a, it's for a.
Okay. Thank you, Matthew. Anybody have any questions for Matthew?
Is, is it outside of our, you might have covered this when I stepped out, disallowing tents in front of the building in those 11? Is that something we have the ability to specify in our, in our recommendation?
It's, it's already disallowed.
Tents in front of the building in those 11 parking spots is already quote unquote illegal?
That's correct.
Understood.
Until it's permitted. It hasn't been permitted yet.
Understood.
All right. Any other questions for Matthew?
So that, that is item number three, where they're not allow, keeping those spaces permanently reserved for parking.
For temporary.
For temporary parking. Sounds great.
So that we can go ahead and make a decision. So we need.
I have a question for the applicant related to this list of seven things.
Okay.
We can have that before you close it.
We can, no, we can handle that after it's, if you want to call up the applicant and ask a question, that's fine.
Yeah. So I don't know whether Ms. Neimire or attorney or who wants to come up and answer this. But, you know, the county has presented us this list of violations. They have some recommendations of what the resolution could be. We heard it nauseam that y'all would work with us on getting this correct. Tell us what you, what are the, what are the differences between this list and what y'all are willing to do? If you say it's more time, tell us you need more time.
We need more time.
So you're, you're comfortable with the stuff in there up here. We just need to put more time on it.
I'm here.
Rob.
Not even one of them.
Rob.
That's what I want to, that's what I want to determine. What's the delta between what the, the staff has asked us to consider versus what y'all's intent is, I guess?
Well, here's, and I've been, I've had a chance to sit with Ms. Neimire and run through these. And, and some of these are easily manageable. And frankly, just frankly, don't need much, much time for us, subject to getting a contractor. But, but then some of these are conceptually difficult. And I'm thinking about the more zoning adjustments. I'm thinking about an application to amend the CUP, and those will take time. But I also think that there may be some creative alternative solutions. I've done a lot of shopping center work where we've allocated parking spaces with permanent easements, cross easements, non-exclusive easements. So I'm sitting over there wondering if these could be opportunities. But I would just, I continue to say what I said an hour ago, and that is, I really wish that you all would, would, would vote to have us come back in 60 days and let us have a chance to work with Matthew. And look, I've worked with him before. I think there's a chance that we can, we can work some of the, through some of these things and maybe make more progress than when we come back in 60 days, you would say, I'm surprised.
I have a question. Can you, can you just, it's only seven items. Can you go down through this and say what, you know, we're, what you may not be willing to do? Or, I mean, we've talked through them all, and we're going to come up with a recommendation here in a few minutes. And if there's something that you need to speak to, that this doesn't work for us, or we're good with that, that, I think that's what we need to hear.
Well, everything has a but to it. And we go into the most difficult part of this. You look at, well, just, just pick something easy. Remove illegal portion of rear deck. Okay, just, just take that. I can't imagine that's going to stand in the way of anything. But an alternative to that is we could ask for permission to keep it there. And the, kind of the same thing with the illegal south deck. But when I see the declaring that the 11 required parking spaces will be permanently reserved and not used for anything else, then I'm thinking about mutual easements that are perpetual. I'm thinking about the property next door, just for example. I'm thinking about property just a little farther down. Now, it, just, just, sir, I think that if it's a condition that we can't use those 11 spaces, that they have to be available for, for cars and can't be used for any other purpose, and we're not allowed an opportunity to go to VZA or to apply for a zoning amendment, then I think that's, I don't know how we get past that.
Well, I guess, to that point, there was a zoning amendment that was made to remove the back deck down to 10 foot and not allow the southern deck. So, I mean, I guess in that case, you'd be going back to the same board to alter a decision that was previously made.
And I am so confused by Vince's letter.
Well, I'm not even thinking about Vince's letter. I sat on that board and I made the motion for that decision back in, what, 2017, if I remember the timeline correct. So I mean, you know, what, that's, that's where the frustration comes into me, is we had to agree to a set of stipulations, a set of rules, a conditional use, and then now we're trying to alter that conditional use into the future. Whereas we just come into compliance with the conditional use.
I understand. But you, you see on my face that I'm, I'm just at a loss. I knew Vince pretty well. And I'm thinking that when he wrote that July 18 letter, and I respect Matthew saying that the only, the only entity that could have amended the CUP was, was this panel. I accept that. At the same time, his, Matthew's proposal tonight gives Matthew the complete discretion on May the 7th to say this is over. So maybe that happened with the planning commission back in 2018. Maybe the planning commission said, okay, we're giving Vince the authority to do this, this, and this. And, you know, you may seem that that's unlikely, but the fact that that's not in the county's records may tell me there's more that, you know, just got slipped away. So just, just staying on my theme, please give us time to work through this. And the difference between now and resetting this for another time is just doesn't seem all that significant. And I think when you honestly take a look at the sightlines, when you honestly take a look at the sightlines, that you will not see a problem. And, and I, I think further that when you look at how sightlines are treated in the zoning ordinance, they're not treated out of private driveways. They're treated with respect to public rights away. Steve, I see the impatience. I'm sorry.
You're okay.
So I, I, you know, I'll say, yes, we're willing to talk about all of it. And there are some that I can say categorically, yes. And then there are some that I can categorically say, we got to figure something out. And, and maybe, maybe in June, we come back and we show you non-exclusive easements that show you that we have arranged for more than 11 parking spaces to your satisfaction.
On this.
And I, sir, I think that's a possibility.
On this, on this .23 acres?
Yes. No, I'm, I mean, on, on.
We're really just talking about this. I think we're really just in reference to this .23 acres is.
Well, I think what he's offering, and I speak for Richard, I think he's offering additional parking offsite as an alternative to, if we give up something.
And that's what I say from the shopping center work I've done, that, that can work.
Matthew, I've got one question. I've sat here and hadn't said a whole lot. This letter that was written to them on March 2nd, had staff discussed these seven items prior to them getting this letter?
Had staff discussed it with the applicant?
Yes.
So staff had discussed the early items. The final items regarding the awnings, so I mean, there's no reason, this is public record, the county received a threat to litigation over this. And in that letter, some of these additional points were raised, and we felt it would be a disservice not to make sure we covered everything that could be possibly an issue with the site.
I'll go.
And I only, only say that we received the letter. We all received that same letter of potential litigation. Staff took this upon, did a site visit, went out there, wrote the letter, gave it to the applicant on, or sent the letter on March 2nd. Here it is, March 22nd, 20 days later. And this is just me. I know we've got to do something. It's non-conforming now. 20 days is, is a lot to ask for, for someone to make adjustments if they received it in the mail, email, or whatever. I think Mr. Davis is asking for some additional time. I mean, I know we, we need to do something, 20 days, and then May 7. I just, I'm just, I guess, a little bit at loss on where do we go from here? Is this committee, or planning commission, can we give them some time, come back, and adhere to this seven days, have a special meeting, let them give us some plan of action of what they can do, what they can't do? Does that give us any legal issue of, of delay in this? I'm just asking questions, what we can do. I think it's, we should give the applicant time to, to respond in writing to us if it's a survey. I agree, you can't get a surveyor out there in 20 days or less. Let them give it to us in writing, and then we go forward from that. Just, just a question.
I love your point, and you just got to let me say that the threat of litigation lawyer, letter didn't come from me. I just have to say that.
Matthew, the, the May 7th date, given the seventh item being removing the canopies, but realizing the, an option they have is to request a permit, and obviously they could not get that by May 7. Is that a reasonable expectation that we could extend this, just knowing that if they want to pursue that, it's going to take longer than May 7th to even apply for it and have the hearing? Is that a reasonable thing on our part to allow? It sounds like it is to me. But is the May 7th date a fixed date, or is that a?
It's, it's not a fixed date. Here's what I would recommend, and I also defer to our legal counsel here today, is that the planning commission requests that the applicant address these seven points in writing and schedule a meeting with staff to address any that they feel like are appropriate to address and provide their plan for addressing those, whether that be a variance or these easements and things like that. And that, and that motion include setting this aside to a future meeting, which would be the May 5th Planning Commission meeting, for us to give you a report on where we are on these seven items. And it'll be at your discretion at that point to say, okay, well, hey, it doesn't look like they're making any progress. We're going to go ahead and revoke it. Or you could say, you know what, okay, it looks like we need 30 days for this one, 60 days for this one, 20 days for this one. Let's go ahead and proceed with that.
Matthew, I have, I have no issue with that, you know, with, as an idea. But that still leaves the, the big pink elephant in the room of the use of the facility itself as it was, as it pertains to what was approved in 2017.
And to that, I would say that we'll allow their very capable legal counsel to make their case as to why they think that that's allowed. And then we'll look to our very capable legal counsel.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay. All right. Sounds like the options are, we can take these seven items as have been listed, or, and, and, and take staff recommendation and make a motion to approve that. Or we can alter that, if you want to do as Matthew said, and, and give them to our next Planning Commission meeting to, to be able to meet with the applicant and come up with a plan that they will present, that we could be presented to us at that time, and we can make a, a decision at that time which direction we would go. So, the good news for me, I can't do anything at this point until you do. So it's, I will entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion. We give them 90 days and let's get the answers and try to figure it out. If you can't, it's, you know, that's where it is.
And I second that motion.
Can we refine that motion just slightly to make sure that we're asking them to address each seven point, each of the seven points explicitly?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Thomas Myers made a motion then that we give them 90 days to address these seven items, bring report back to us. Brad, do you second that motion?
Okay.
Okay. Any questions on the motion? Any comments, any comments before we vote?
Do you have a comment on it? I just, just question on the 90 days to address all seven versus the, give it to the next commission meeting to address. I would speed up the timeline. I think they can answer the seven, and then at March 5th, we can give them time for whatever they come back. In the sense of the 90 days, all but one of these is easy. I mean, all but one is literally easy. And so that's why I said at the May 5th, we'll see good faith that, hey, we've addressed all these things. We've got one that's a stickler, and they're going to have to go and get, I mean, there's a lot to do on that one point. And there's a lot of attorneys are going to talk, and a lot of other stuff's going to happen. But that won't happen in 90 days. And we'll be, we'll be at that point. So I just, maybe just think through the date on it.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Daniel. I think, I mean, we're, we're looking at 44 days from today until the May 5th meeting, which I think is reasonable to have a plan to address all seven of these in 44 days.
Do we need to, do we need to stipulate that they meet with staff and all that, or is that just to be assumed?
I think we should stipulate it.
Well, first off, we have a motion on the floor for 90 days and a second.
I have one question about what the, address the issues. How do you define that? Does that mean they, they correct them? Or does that mean they, they give us a plan to correct them?
Matt, I'll ask the person that made the motion.
I think they address it in 90 days. But you may be exactly right.
No, I'm, I'm, my question is, what does address mean? Does it mean fix it? Or does it mean?
Fix it.
Have a plan?
Fix it.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. So we have the motion. Unless, unless the motion's changed, we're going to vote on that then?
So at the end of those 90 days, then, is that the automatic revocation if they fail to comply with those seven points? Do we keep that staff recommendation?
I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, that's fix it.
All right. That's, that's the way the motion was intended. So that's, we're going to vote on the motion as though 90 days, they fix it or it's revoked. That's the motion. Now, if you don't, if you want to consider another motion, you either vote against this one and make a new motion, or, so we're going to vote on this motion. All right, everybody understands the motion is to deal with these seven items, that they have to be dealt with in 90 days. If not dealt with, then it will be revoked.
And for clarity, essentially, it's my, what I have up there right now, except for instead of May 7th, it's 90 days.
Right.
Just for clarity.
Everybody understand?
I have one, if this would be made an amendment to the motion. It was referenced that we lack a survey of the property. That does not exist in our files. I would, is that possible to require a survey of the property as is, just to verify what's there is to be added in our file in this timeframe?
Am I not seeing that on number four, that it's a signed and sealed survey?
Okay, it's there. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Can, I have one more question about the 90 days and what happens at the end of that 90 days. If, if they do work on this project that they feel has addressed the issues, but we don't agree, does that automatically trigger a revocation? Or should we have a review at 90 days to ensure that they've done that and then take a at 90 days to ensure that they've done that, and then take a separate vote on whether to revoke or not at that time?
Well, at this point, the way the motion is worded, it, they have 90 days to do it. The staff would have to verify whether it's done or not. At the end of 90 days, they have not. It's revoked by the, by the vote tonight.
Well, maybe it should read, if there is something specific within it, and they can show why they need another, whatever it may be, then you vote on that at that time.
Okay. We got a motion, though, unless you're going to change your, your motion, we're going to have to go with the original motion. All right, we're going to go with, if you don't like the motion, you vote against it, and we'll have to have another, another motion. But everybody understand what you're voting on? So a yes vote's going to be in favor of the 90 days. Okay?
One, one quick question. Are we, as Planning Commission, whatever the staff comes back to, we don't want to get an email in 90 days saying it's been revoked without us even have the courtesy of knowing what's going on out there?
I think with this motion, we wouldn't see this.
You wouldn't, that's what I'm saying.
Can I withdraw my second? Then I disagree with that. I'm not going to vote to move forward with that with-
Withdraw as well, and we'll figure out in a way-
That's it. Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I could make a recommendation, I'm going to go back to my kind of original extra recommendation, I think it's the simplest solution. If y'all would ask the applicant to respond in writing to these seven points and meet with staff to come up with a proposal on how they want to address these and bring that back before you on the May 5th meeting. Again, they don't have to resolve them all. They're supposed to just provide their plan by the May 5th meeting, and y'all can choose a later meeting for coming up with a plan if you want to. You can say-
No, I'm good with that. Just have a motion.
Did we rescind the other motion? Was that dealt with? Okay.
All right.
My concern is that, that whatever we get back on the 5th of, or 7th of May, or at our meeting on the 5th, we still don't have a date certain that they have to fix these things.
That's what we'll decide then.
Yeah, okay, that, that's fine.
They'll come back with a plan, and we then will decide the time needed to accomplish it.
Under that, under those circumstances, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion as stated by Matthew Brown.
All right, so that, I want to be clear about the motion. The motion is then that we give the applicant time to meet with staff between now and May, our next meeting of May 5th, to go over these items and to bring a recommendation to, to us at that meeting, and we'll move forward from there.
A resolution on the seven items?
Yeah. Okay. So Bill, you made that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Michael, second it. Okay, any questions on this motion before we go?
Mr. Chairman, I have, I'll have a question, but I do want to make a statement for the applicant and for us. As we see the demonstration, good, some of the hesitancy of board members are wanting to get things accomplished might be that there might be a date that was or was not. There was this, it was or was not. But by May 5th, if we see that good faith, I think, so to the applicant, working with staff, it would be the burden on the applicant to work diligently to fulfill what was said. And so at that meeting, there might just be one remaining. So just agree with the second.
Okay. Any other comments?
And I agree with that same statement. Let's give the applicant time to address these seven items, give us a plan, let the professional engineer certify parking spaces, let the planning department go out there, do a site visit, give us a report back, give us an update of where, where we stand with some definitive answers on what's going forward, and then we can address that at our next meeting of how to move forward.
Okay. One last time, any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're not, we're not adjourned yet, so don't-
Just a quick reminder that the meeting is not yet adjourned. Just a quick reminder.
We're going to wait until after they leave.
If y'all want to, you can just run through it.
Yeah, amazes me sometimes. I think so.
If I can get you folks to quietly go ahead, we still have to close our meeting out. We'll have a couple of things before we can do that. So if y'all can go on outside and visit, we appreciate it.
Or you can stay. Yeah. I don't think they heard. You really want me to do this?
Could I, could I get you folks to please go on outside?
Let me clear this room for you.
Would you, would you, or?
I'm so lightly spoken that I'll get them out of here.
Everybody get out! Thank you. All right.
I don't have any other items business-wise to discuss, and there's any public comments? Most of them have left. I think we've heard all the comments. All right. Staff report? Matthew, anything?
No, sir, other than I would say, I think we may have a member of the press here, and public comments would be our, our situation for you to ask questions if you wanted to.
Any questions? John?
I just want to clarify what the motion was and what-
Okay. The, the motion that was approved was that we are giving the applicant till the next, excuse me, to our May 5th Planning Commission meeting to address the items that were presented by staff tonight, for them to come up with a plan of how to resolve the items, and they would present that at our next meeting. At that meeting, we would then decide how much time they may need to resolve the, the items that they intend to resolve, and so, that pretty much-
First to consider further action.
Yeah, at that time, we would consider further action.
If it's possible, we need to get a copy of that.
One thing I'll note is that this meeting is recorded on Facebook Live, so that will be posted, and you can kind of go back through, and then it'll become part of the meeting minutes at some point, once those are approved.
Okay. Anything from council?
Yes.
All right. So even though we talked about the May 5th meeting, our next meeting is April the 7th, so we do have a meeting between now and then. Anything else? Welcome to Jamie. Well, what an introduction. You want to resign now? All right, we're glad to have you.
Yes.
All right. Nothing else? We adjourned.